I would like to call the September 22nd, 2020 Select Board Meeting to order. This evening. We are broadcast on RCTV, Verizon Channel 33, Xfinity Channel 22, also available on Facebook Live, the link from RCTV and YouTube. For public comment, we'll be allocating time at 7:15. We have, I believe, one person who is in queue to speak then. And then we'll be going to the public hearing that will open at 7:30. We have a number of people that have already requested to speak at that, at that activity as well. Just a quick reminder for everyone, the best place to find resources about the town in general, but also specific to COVID-19 or any questions you might have is our website, readingma.gov. You can see links here. You can also send emails. Human and Elder Services, you can see COVID-19 help. We also would love to have people, if you're interested in helping, there's a specific email for volunteering as well as general questions. You can also call Town Hall, 781-942-6680. There'll be a menu of options which you can select from, leave your name and phone number. And as always, if there's an emergency, please just call 911.
Mark, I was wondering, could we update this slide, given some of the presentation we received from the Reading Coalition for Prevention and Support? For emergencies, call 911 or the number that they provided. If you're having a mental health emergency, there's, there's an additional number you can call.
That's a great idea. And do you happen to know that number now? Announcing it in a minute after I.
One minute.
Yeah, that's a great idea. I think we should update this with that information on mental health support, the phone number and actions. Great. Terms of tonight's agenda, so after this overview, we have Carrie Denell from the Board of Health. Talk a little bit about COVID-19 response, will then do liaison reports, and we've combined kind of town manager discussion into that area as well. Public comment at 7:15 and 7:30, we will open the public hearing to discuss issues related to downtown parking. About 8:40 should be a presentation from the VASC regarding Board of Health and ZBA, and we're planning to take votes on both of those this evening. About 8:50, we'll move to the warrant. There are a few updates that are there and maybe a few discussion items. We do need to close the warrant this evening for November Town Meeting. Reflective, both of the town moderators desire to go virtual for the meeting as well as we need to close the warrant. At nine o'clock, we'll move on to the town manager's goals, which are in the packet based on the feedback that, that we gave to Bob at our last meeting. 9:45, we have on here a related to the Auburn Street activities with the water tower to discuss the October 20th meeting logistics, how we want to run that meeting, and I wanted the board to have input into what we're going to do for that. I have talked and have a little bit of input from the neighbors, but I want to make sure that we're in agreement on the format to use. Then we'll move on. We have one, we're all cut up on minutes up to our last meeting, and those minutes are in the package. And then about 9:55, go on to future meeting agenda topics. And by any chance, did you find that phone number?
Yes, so this is for Elliot Emergency Services, which operates a 24/7 mobile service for psychiatric evaluation, crisis intervention, stabilization and follow-up for children, adults and elders in psychiatric distress. That number is 1-800-988. Oh, and then it says 1-1-1. I don't know if there's a missing digit there in the email that, that we have. Let me see if I click on the actual website, but, but I'm, I'm recalling that it could take a couple hours for, for, for services to arise, arrive. So you can always call 911 as well.
Yeah, so when I, I think maybe we'll do, we'll, I'm sure, take a break at some point tonight, maybe we'll find the, the missing digit.
Yeah.
You can update the information.
That sounds good.
Great. Okay, so let's move on to COVID-19 response. Carrie, can I ask you to, to speak from the Board of Health, please?
Hey, good evening. So just briefly, you know, COVID-19 response continues. We are in great shape. There still is only one hospital in the Commonwealth that is on search capacity, which means that there are sufficient beds. What we're seeing is that cases are, there's not a lot of hospitalization. There continue to be cases. And I think that's the important point. There continue to be cases. People need to continue to wear face coverings to honor the social distancing requirements. We've been in great shape, but we, you know, we're not sure what's going to happen as the, the cooler weather comes in. To prepare for that, the Health Department is working on flu clinics to immunize folks for the regular flu. And there's also been some great coordination with the public health nursing, nursing staff, the health staff, and the school nurses to talk about preparation for if there should be any instances of positive cases in the community, how will they coordinate? How will they respond? How will they share information? I had the opportunity to sit in on one of those meetings, and I just want to say that I think I, it was, it was very heartening. I was impressed. I, I was impressed by the collaboration, by the planning, by the forethought that everyone was putting into it. It's really nice to see. And I'm fortunate. And then I think the only other thing I said, I'd say thank you to the VASC for meeting to fill our, to work to fill our vacancies. I don't know if there are any questions?
Board members, any questions? I have a couple of quick ones. One on the flu clinics, I suspect that you're going to tell me that as soon as possible is the planning timing at this point, and you'll have updates to share with us when you can.
Yeah, I, I want to make sure that our dates are confirmed. We have dates, but I haven't seen it in, in writing yet, so I don't want to share a date and be wrong. But yes, there are some dispensing for staff and the like and for for elders, that that's in the works as well as a general public one being planned in the, in late September and early and during October.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? No, great. Thank you, Carrie. Thanks for the update.
Thanks, Bob.
Bob, anything you want to share from Command or other activities on COVID-19 first?
Sure, just very quickly. Mark, you sat through the last command meeting. The notes are in the packet. We spent a great deal of time on the, you know, Carl McFadden issue. Two updates. One, within 24 hours of the meeting we had on Monday, we learned through town council and the state that they were effectively exempt from almost everything we talked about. So we did a great deal of planning, and it was, you know, it was good exercise, but it was for naught. They had an exception under an executive order that we weren't aware of. I'm not sure if they were, but they found it out the Thursday before. So all the review the town ended up doing was all based on change of use under zoning. So the property itself, nothing to do with pandemic education and so forth, it was all related to, to the zoning change. And along those lines, I heard through social media, there was a complaint that we were spending too much time on that effort when we weren't doing others. That's the only one that's come to us. So if there's some other use out there other than five families in a, in a single family home, we need to know that. Again, no, no business owner has come to us and said they're offering any kind of service like this. And it could be that they're also exempt, and it's a minor matter, but we don't know that. So, you know, if the community wants to let any of the staff know about it, we're certainly happy to work with someone. So that's all, Mark.
So just for, for the benefit of the board, if you saw it in Command Package, but to give you a little bit more color around it. The proposal was for both curricular and extracurricular activities at the former Reading Athletic Club, if I have it right, and the Danus property down by Market Basket. And there was a lot of work that was put into exploring the requirements that would need to be met based on the state guidelines that were given to us. And I think the, the update Bob just gave us is that despite all of that, there actually was an exemption that they have been working with. And do we know what their status is now? Is that up and running? Is it planning to be up?
They, they had an inspection this morning. I'm not sure if it was real or virtual. I think it was real. And I expect to hear tomorrow. I don't think they're open, but they had their EEC inspection this morning, and they expect to hear back tonight or tomorrow morning. And they said it went well.
Great, okay. So the town's role at this point is inspectional services mostly.
Yeah, we were done last week, and then we'll have to issue of, I think Gene is a final, final building permit necessary? Or not? We can't hear you, Gene.
We issued the building permit, so.
So we're done.
Okay. Great. So Bob, when we, we'll do liaison, then come back to you for Town Manager, if that's all right. Okay, so next liaison reports. Anyone have any, any updates that they would like to share? Vanessa?
Thanks, Mark. So I, and I think others as well, went over to the water tower in the Auburn Street area to meet with residents. I, we, I know later on we'll be discussing the logistics for the next meeting, but I did want to let the residents know if you're watching and you're from that area. We have heard your concerns. We will be discussing them next week. Personally, just sort of community is informed. I have significant reservations about the plan that's been put forward, and I think we'll need extensive discussion and perhaps revisit the approach, because I'm not comfortable with where it is now. That's all. Thank you.
And just to clarify, the October 20th, I think, is the, the timing that we're talking about, not next week.
Oh, yes, thank you. October 20th.
Yep, no problem. Other, other comments? Sorry, liaison reports. Yeah.
Yes, so from the Board of Health, they are looking at the possibility of having a consultant conducting a Health Department assessment, which could result in recommendations, which could include but not be limited to hiring a Health Director. Last night, they reviewed and, and revised a scope of work for said consultant and specified this needs to be conducted by a consultant with experience working in health departments and assessing departments to be submitted with a list of consultants for review by purchasing. And my understanding from Bob is that any any funding transfers necessary to effectuate either this Health Department assessment and/or the hiring of a Health Department, a Health Director. And then there were some emails and letters to us recommending that in our packet tonight, that whatever is needed and decided by town meeting can be, would be able to be accommodated under existing warrant articles in the, as, as are laid out in the packet.
Thank you, Ann. Karen, Carlo?
Nope.
Well, I, Mark, thanks. I didn't attend, but I know CPDC had a busy meeting last week with the Chronicle Building. Running Animal Clinic is expanding their property and a few other items. But I know the the board requested the developer to scale down the property on Main Street, the old Chronicle Building, down to 12 units, and they were going to get back to the board to see if that was feasible. But as I understand it, from what I read, it went from 19 to 16, and now they said 12, which would cut an entire floor. So economically, he's got to figure out if that makes sense. And yeah, I didn't attend, but I, I read a little bit about it.
Great, thanks, Carlo. Karen?
And just to follow up on that project, I am being CC'd by Colleen over at the General Manager at RMLD. She's continuing ongoing discussions with the developer at 513 about natural gas alternatives, greener energy alternatives for powering that building, including, you know, discussions for electrification of the heat, the cooking. And they are also still discussing a number of EV chargers in that building. So she's keeping me in the loop on that, and conversations are going well.
Great, thanks, Karen. Just one quick update on, I'm sorry, Anne, go ahead.
That's one additional report. I'd, I'd mentioned at our last meeting that ATRAC was looking at bringing together our state legislative delegation for an event, and they are, they have scheduled and are planning a listening to understand event to be held with Representative Hagerty, Representative Jones, and Senator Lewis. And that is scheduled for Wednesday, October 7th at 6:30 PM. You can find more information on the Human Relations Advisory Committee of Reading MA's Facebook page.
Great.
It'll be a virtual event.
Thank you. One quick update as it relates to town meeting, there is a, an informal group that has already started discussions on the staff side about what, what we learned from the last one and what's required to, to improve it and make it run well technologically and other ways. And there is a meeting coming up, I think, next week to further those discussions. If any board members or residents have any comments that they would want to share, please feel free to, to send them to me, and I guess I can be the representative for the moment in terms of talking as in part of that group. So it's a, it's just an informal group looking to, to make sure that we're, we're doing the best that we can. Okay, with that, Bob, let me turn it over to you for Town Manager.
Thank you. First, a quick comment for Anne. That same night, the ATRAC event is scheduled, has an economic development summit and a financial forum, so town attendance, town employee attendance will be light. And they're kind of one after the other. On the 13th of September, DPW staff sent a draft DPW protocol policy covering tree safety issue located within CONSCOM jurisdictional issues. DPW worked with Chuck Torone, our Conservation Administrator, to work on this set of protocols. As soon as town council gives us some feedback, I'll let the board know, and, and that's, you know, that's the issue that you're faced up on Main Street in terms of a homeowner having some trees taken down with town, with CONSCOM's permission, but at his expense. So stay tuned on that. We expect to hear back from, from town council. Lastly, there's a few issues I can share one screen and dispense with. Here's a list of upcoming events. The board has probably heard of all or most of these, but a press release will be going out either tonight or tomorrow, just a summary in one place. On September 29th at 6 o'clock, there'll be a virtual Road 28, Route 28 Road Diet webinar. On September 30th, the next night, a Walkers Brook Drive corridor, also Zoom meeting. That's primarily a neighborhood meeting, but that's also scheduled if the board is interested. And then lastly, on October 7th, the Economic Development Summit's 5:30 to 7:30, and then the Financial Forum to start at 8 o'clock to follow. So that's, that's all I have. Thank you.
Head to my board members tomorrow evening, the 23rd, 7 PM is a financial forum. And we are needed at that meeting. There is the matter of revolving funds that both FinCom and the Select Board need to jointly vote on. So that's tomorrow evening at 7 o'clock. The, there is a Zoom invite. I, I didn't see one, but I went and I went onto the town website, and the, there's a Zoom posted there that you're able to, to use for that meeting.
Okay.
Great. Okay, any questions on board?
It is kind of funny. Thank you for bringing that up. I would have expected we would have received an invite to the financial forum, and I'm so glad you brought that up, Mark.
Actually, one more is going out in the morning because I had to wait till the state clarified some things today. They don't have a state budget or a timetable for having one is the bottom line. So we're kind of on our own.
So just to clarify, did I miss, because to Karen's point, were we notified that that was coming, that an email come through? Are we posted?
Yes and yes. There was a request that was put out to board members to confirm the 23rd because of the revolving fund issue dates back a week or two, maybe?
Yeah.
I think so, but it wasn't a formal invitation. There was an indication that was the date, and to please confirm that we could attend so that we'd have a quorum. So I'm assuming that responded to that.
Going forward, just for Mark, perhaps for Bob, if, if we can be formally notified once meetings are confirmed, that would be helpful.
Yeah, I'm, but maybe we could ask Jackie to include us on the, the invitation list as it goes out. That would be great.
That would be great. Thank you. And are we posted for the other two meetings that were mentioned? Or can we be posted in case a quorum decides to attend?
Yeah, I think we, you are not posted yet. My intention is to post you for everything we showed you.
Perfect. Thanks so much, Bob.
Any other comments or questions? No, okay, so let's move on to public comment. I believe we have one person that wants to speak now. I think it's Eleanor.
Yes.
Hi, Eleanor. You are muted.
Thank you. I'm sorry. I'm watching you online. Let me pause that. So thank you for the opportunity to speak. So I'm Dr. Eleanor Schonkopf, 32 Harvard Street. I wanted to start with an expression of gratitude. So this has been an unparalleled seven months, and to the Select Board, to the Town Managers, to Town Staff, especially the Health Department, and to the members of the Board of Health, thank you for your fortitude and unyielding commitment to keeping our town safe. I wanted to make public comment about the letter I submitted to the Select Board on September 16th. For those of you who don't know, I was the Chair of the Board this past summer and had been on the board since November of 2018. And I resigned in August of 2020, so a little over a month ago. And since that time, I've had space to reflect on my time there and wanted to speak directly. So in the letter, I highlighted some key roles for the Town and Board of Health, and listed some areas where I think improvement is warranted. These are retention, transparency, and functional support. So when we're not in a pandemic, there are more clear distinctions between the roles played by the board and the town, including management and staff. And it's, I think it's admirable and correct that everyone jumped in at that time. I think it led to some blurred roles, which revealed some areas for improvement that already existed but were magnified, and those need to be addressed. So I think progress is actually already being made. Maybe an interim directive director could be put in place maybe before the next Select Board meeting. I don't know the progress there. It's my understanding that the Board of Health will conduct an internal assessment and also community needs assessment. I think these sound great for strategy moving forward. I think we have more than enough information, though, to make progress on the, on the issues that I mentioned in the letter. So thank you. That concludes my comment. I appreciate the time.
Thanks, Eleanor. Thanks for joining. Just to check, Caitlin, we don't have anyone else for public comment prior to the public hearing, is that right?
Oh, everyone else wanted to speak about parking.
Okay, great. So let, let's go to the public hearing with a little bit of effort. I think I can get this on screen. Carlo, could I ask you to read the legal notice, please?
Okay, to the inhabitants of the town of Reading, please take notice that the Select Board of the town of Reading will hold a public hearing on September 22nd, 2020 at 7:30 PM remotely on Zoom to make modifications to the downtown parking system. A copy of the proposed documents regarding this topic will be in the Select Board packet on the town website, reading dot, readingma.gov. All interested parties are invited to attend the hearing. I may submit their comments in writing or by email prior to 4 PM on September 22nd, 2020. The town manager at CI dot reading dot MA dot US dot US by order of Bob Loser, Town Manager.
Thanks, Carlo. So with the, with the hearing open, what I'd like to suggest is that Julie offered to share her screen and go through kind of the highlights of the presentation, just so that everyone can participate or hear that first. Then what we would do is open to public comments. We have six, I believe, people roughly that have asked to speak and to be able to allow them to, to share their, their comments with the board. We have with us, so quite a few people. So I see, so Julie, Jean, and, and Aaron from the town side. I get the name, is it Matt Smith? Great, great. From Nelson Nygaard, the group that did the, one of the studies, the parking assessment from the Police Department. I see Christine Amendola, and I think Dave Clark. Yep, see you both. Thank you. Thanks for joining this evening, and also Jane Wellman, Officer Mike Scoughton. Oh, and we also have from DPW, Jane Consella, Chris Cole. Great, so full house, awesome. So Julie, can I turn it over to you to go through presentation, please?
Yes.
Sorry, I'm getting mine off here.
No problem.
There you go.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for having me back to the big night, hopefully for us on the town side. So what I'm going to do tonight, as Mark mentioned, is just kind of go through the presentation that I've updated over the past couple of weeks, but it is, or it's been an iterative process. So when you see, share my screen really quickly. Find my presentation. So you know, we're here tonight to talk about the potential system modifications that we've been discussing since actually last October. And on this slide, you know, I do note that we did discuss this in January, and then I updated the same presentation in February, also for March, the meeting didn't happen, and then again for August and for September. So the information that's in this presentation hasn't changed in any huge ways. It's, it's been really continuous since we first started talking about this. There have been some modifications that we've made to small aspects of, of things that we've been thinking as we've gone along, though, and as we've taken into consideration the feedback that we've heard on from residents and businesses and stakeholders. So as I mentioned in the past, you know, well, in the face of this, this part, it really is, you know, a cross-disciplinary team effort. The Parking Traffic Transportation Task Force, the staff group includes, you know, members from management, Bob and Jean, planning and economic development staff, and Aaron's here tonight, too. DPW and Engineering who are with us tonight, and then members of public safety, so both the Police Department and the Fire Department. We felt that it was very important that we be united with these recommendations, so we're not working at cross purposes together. And, you know, we've had a dialogue that's been on a weekly basis, basically, starting last fall, and then, you know, throughout the latter part of the summer, we, so we're constantly talking about what it is we're proposing and new information that we've heard, and whether we need to think about things in a different way. And, and, you know, it's been a really great team effort, and I'm really proud to be able to be the face of this effort and present it to you over the past year. So again, going through the sources that we've used for this presentation, so the maps and the data that you see, they, many of them come from the parking study that we had done in 2008, which was also revised in 2018, prepared by Nelson Nygaard. And as Mark mentioned, Matt Smith from Nelson Nygaard is here with us tonight to help answer any questions that you and the public may have. And then we did a survey last fall to kind of understand the parking needs of the town and needs and challenges. Anecdotal information, you know, you all know, we hear about parking at every public meeting that we have. It's a hot topic. And then obviously, our ongoing conversations with the Police Department, they, they see things and know things from a different side than, than most of us experience. So their, their input's really helpful. And the philosophy and opportunities that are, you know, underpinning this effort are, they're based on industry practice and recommendations from the Nelson Nygaard study. They're not things that we dreamed up overnight, though. We would love to take credit for them. So tonight's presentation, I have a brief overview of the proposal. I know, you know, a lot of you have been with this this whole time and have, you know, seen how it's evolved over time. And I just really want to say for anyone who's new to this and wants to go back and see what's been discussed, everything is also on the website and I'm just going to quickly flip screens. So under the planning division on the town website, there's a link on the left-hand side to downtown parking system modifications. And there's a brief description at the top, and then if you scroll down, there are links to all the prior select board discussions of this, going back to last October, as well as the presentations. And then additional information that I provided to the select board was also within their packets for each of these meetings and can be searchable and findable that way. So I'm just going to go back to where I was. All right. And then I'm going to go over the outreach efforts that we recently undertook and some of the feedback that we received. I did get a lot of new emails in the last couple of days and tried to read through them all. I didn't get a chance to respond to everybody, but there was, you know, again, a lot of really good valid input that came through just recently. And many of, much of which we'd heard before, but you know, some new ideas as well. The request of the Parking Traffic Transportation Task Force for tonight is that you vote on these changes that we've been discussing for almost a year. We think they're really well-founded and logical and, you know, could help us go in a new direction. And, you know, I think it's important for me to note that I would love it if we could please all the people all the time and make everybody happy. But, you know, I think we still will get complaints even if we do implement some changes. And then again, we will just continue to reassess and see if we need to make tweaks or make additional changes as we move forward. So the items that I'd like you to vote on specifically into four categories are broken down into the leased space program, the employee permit program, public access, and then kiosks and public lots. And then at the end of the presentation, I did provide some supporting documentation, which we can get into if you have questions. I probably won't present it unless you want me to. But the implementation timeline, kind of what we're thinking about when we might be able to implement certain aspects of the program and, you know, some of the aspects might be more short-term and some might be more long-term, but it's all in that. And then I did provide the engineering field inventory of parking spaces, which differs slightly from the numbers that you see on all the maps I use, which were put together by our consultant. So this is, when I asked engineering to go out and kind of give a conservative estimate of what they really thought we could achieve if we formalized parking on certain streets. Looking at, you know, fire safety access, the idea that people don't always park in the most efficient manner. So giving lots of room, looking at all the driveways and the curb cuts and different things like that. So we think that that's a realistic estimate. And then I provided the police DPW lighting needs assessment. They went out and kind of evaluated where we might need to make some improvements to lighting and safety upgrades. And the Harndon Yard Lot Proposal, which came through from the police department and explains what we would do with the leased parking in the Harndon Yard Lot if you do away with the leasing program. And then again, a map of downtown geography. So for anyone who isn't quite totally familiar with the lingo that I'm using, it's described maybe in a little more simple way at the end of the presentation. So I'm going to just go over what we talked about. I'm going to zoom in on this map because I'm going to talk the text. So don't worry too much about the words. Just look at the map. So what I did here, it's a little bit revised from, I think, the last time I showed it to you. Because we did decide a few weeks ago as a group that we would take the proposed modifications to the resident-only areas off the table at this time. So when you're looking at this map, the solid color lines like the fuchsia lines here and the green and the gray, those are our existing parking regulations, which are all described over here on the left-hand side. Any of the areas that we're proposing to make changes, I've highlighted and I use two different colors. I use pink and I use orange. And the orange changes are within this area that we're referring to as the inner core. And then the pink changes are in this area that we're referring to as the outer core. So I really just highlighted street segments that were where proposed changes are at this time. And again, no changes to the resident-only areas here on Green Street, Linden Street, Bancroft Shoot, and down here on High Street. So that by extension will hopefully not result in any changes to commuter parking supply. So just really quickly to go over the changes in the inner core. The first thing that we're looking at doing is actually adding regulations to Ash Street. There are parking spaces there that are striped, but there aren't any regulations. And we see that as an area where we could add public two-hour spaces. And the reason for public two hours is because we're proposing that within the inner core, as much as possible, we would like it to be public two-hour. So right now where we have the green highlight, or sorry, the green, that all indicates existing public two-hour. And we're trying to make the system more uniform and more simple for the user by having consistent regulations from block to block as much as we can. Another change is that we would move a few of the employee, the employee spaces. So here on Gold Street, this like black dotted area, and then here on Green, there's maybe one or two spaces. And then in Brandy Court, there are, I think, 12 employee spaces. So those spaces would also just become public two-hour and they would not be available to employees. We do have a proposal to increase the amount of employee parking or the locations for employee parking in the outer core, which I'll talk about in a minute. And then the lots are highlighted because that's where we're proposing to add the paid parking kiosks. So just really quick, we're looking at two kiosks in each of our public lots here. So the Brandy Court Lot and the Upper Haven Lot. And the kiosks, the goal of the kiosks is, you know, to provide, we would provide, they would be able to be accessed by smartphone or you could go up to it and program it. You could pay with a credit card cash coins. They would be located in, you know, visible, well-lit, safe locations. There are a lot of details that we're kind of talking through about the kiosks, but that's the basic gist. And then the idea is that there would be, it would be kind of a pricing scheme so that people who want to park in downtown all day long won't take up valuable spaces in the lots. We see the parking lots really as an amenity. And we would like to encourage a certain amount of turnover in the lots. And not have, you know, employees of businesses necessarily parking there all day. So we can get a little bit more into detail about the kiosks later. And then I mentioned that the leasing program that we talked about, so in terms of where the lease spaces are, we have four that are in this Brandy Court Lot. And sorry, they're not in Brandy Court Lot. They're on Brandy Court. And that's something I should clarify because I misunderstood that until recently. So those spaces would turn into public two-hour spaces. So those are the changes proposed for the inner core. And then in the outer core, the pink highlights are the locations where we would make changes. And the outer core is where we're really looking to do public two-hour or all day with employee permit. So as you know, like there are already a lot of employee parking spaces like in the outer core. So employees are already used to parking in these areas and we would just extend them. So like this area here on Haven Street, instead of just public two-hour, it would be public two-hour or all day with employee permit. Again, similarly on Sheepen, Green Street is currently unregulated and we would look to add employee parking along the north side of Green Street. And then up here in the northern part, this northern stretch of Sanborn Street would also be public two-hour or all day with employee permit, similarly on Linden Street. One thing that I would want to point out to anyone who's watching and to, for anyone who didn't fully appreciate this earlier, on some of these streets that are quite narrow, if we do formalize parking, it will only be on one side. And for proper fire and emergency access, it would mean the other side would then become no parking. So that's just something I wanted to clarify in case it wasn't obvious from prior conversations. And then again, in the outer core, like we do have 41 of our 58 leased parking spaces are located right here along High Street. And these would turn into public two-hour or all day with employee permit. The other 13 leased spaces are in the Harndon Yard Lot over here. And I have a map that I can provide if anyone wants to see what that would look like. But the police department came up with what I think is a logical way of using those spaces. So that, I think, covers that. And I have it in chart format for anyone who just wants to read about it. And I have the geographies kind of described up here and then impacts to the system and to each user type and component described below. Just basically what I just said. One thing is that we did kind of fine-tune what we're thinking with the employee permit program over the last couple of weeks. And the police department felt pretty strongly that in order to be able to maintain some supply of employee permits throughout throughout the year and not have them all get taken in the first month, that we would want to put a cap of five for the first month per business. Those first five would be free. And then after that first month, they would charge $20 a month or $240 a year for up to 10 additional permits per business on a case-by-case basis. So that's language that we worked together to kind of work out in the last couple of weeks. And I should have mentioned when I was on the map that we do think, sorry, we do think we can add about 180 formal locations for employees to park within that outer core area, which would enable the police department to give out a lot more permits. Okay. And then this next slide is just the footnotes from the prior slide, if you want more detail. And then so the outreach and feedback that we, the staff have done. So we did a lot like prior to COVID. And then when we reconvened this effort last month, we did a lot over Zoom. So we've had a couple of meetings with PDA Dental specifically. We, let me just back up for a minute. Sorry. So for this outreach effort, we did put a notification in the water bill that went to, you know, anyone in town who gets a water bill. And then we did a code red alert to a wide area around the downtown, including about, I think, 3,400 different different contacts. I did also send out a few emails to over 190 businesses in the downtown, to a few dozen residents, a lot of, all the property owners that I have contact information for. So we did as much outreach as we could and we offered 10 different Zoom sessions at different times of day. I tried to like vary it as much as I possibly could to capture as many people in different schedules as possible. The info sessions that we had attended by about a handful of people each time, which actually made for some really good, like small group conversations. And it enabled people who did participate to ask me a lot of really in-depth questions. And I thought they were generally speaking, very positive. We had a lot of really great feedback. And actually, based on some of the sessions that we had in August and the feedback we got from residents in August, we actually made some of the changes that the change to, we made the decision not to make any changes to the resident-only areas at this time. So we did really take the feedback like seriously and I felt like the conversations were quite positive. I have summarized some of the feedback on the next two slides. So generally speaking, resident concerns that I heard in the Zoom sessions were, you know, the downtown's getting built really quickly. And if we don't have a parking supply issue now, we will have a parking supply issue in the future. And then safety issues with lighting sidewalks and plowing need to be addressed. And generally, there's a general feeling that we don't have enough commuter parking downtown. There were a lot of other comments. There was a lot of relief that we decided not to change resident-only areas. More recently, there's been feedback I've gotten over email asking for clarification about the streets that are narrow, like I said, where we would formalize parking and then on one side only and then have the other side be no parking. And then, you know, concerns about if we allow employees to park a little bit further out, that'll push commuters out and it's just going to be growing. So there's been a variety of comments and concerns. Business feedback. There's been some questions about whether we would treat Brandy Court, the Brandy Court Lots, the same way as the Upper Haven Lot. And that 30 minutes free may not be enough time in the Brandy Court Lot for the medical uses that are down there. And these appointments tend to be longer, especially now during COVID, when you need to arrive early and let them know you're there. And so it takes a little bit more time. The importance of allowing validation and flexibility around how we do that was mentioned a lot. The kiosks and challenges for elderly patrons can't be taken lightly. And then, you know, something that we have been hearing throughout this conversation is that, you know, if we charge for parking in the downtown, people will take their business elsewhere. And then again, safety issues with lighting sidewalks and plowing, and those are things we're having like ongoing conversations with the police department and DPW about. And as I mentioned, I did provide that that chart at the end of this presentation that kind of describes where we might be able to make some upgrades in that regard. So those were the key points that I heard in the Zoom sessions. And then again, what we're asking or requesting of you tonight. These are the voting components. And do you want me to keep going, Mark?
I wonder if it's, so these are more specific to the votes. I'm wondering if it's worth taking a break here, allowing for public input and the public hearing to take place. I'd ask just for one quick clarification before going to that. Where there is new outer core parking being designated for employees, what is the impact on residents? What access do they have?
Sure. Let me just go back to the map really quick. That's a really good question. I'll zoom back in. So we do have currently on the books a system where I, any resident with an employee restriction along their property frontage can apply to the police department for an employee permit so that they can park there. I don't believe to date that it's heavily utilized. And I'm not sure, I think members of the police department can describe a little bit more about how that works and whether there's discretion used in issuing those permits.
Yeah, Julie, they are free. If your house is regulated, on a regulated street, you get a free pass for whatever goes in front of your house to use.
Great. Thank you. If, Anne, I see you talking, but I don't hear you.
Would that remain the same?
Yes, that is not proposed change at this time.
Okay. So for areas that would now become employee permit or two-hour parking, if you live on that street, you can park in front of your house for free all day?
Yes, you get a permit from the police department. Yeah.
Okay. That's helpful. Thank you.
Mark, I have a question that
A question or a clarification?
Request, a clarification on this point.
Okay, thank you.
Which is, the permits right now are stickers that go on your car. So if you live on one of these streets and you have a guest or a care provider, are they unable to park on the street? Are exceptions, you know, in cities, they have guest passes, but I haven't seen that here in town. I'm not recommending that. I'm just curious about where guests park.
So I would have to defer to the police department on exactly how the employee permits are tied or whether they're tied to specific license plates or not. But I do believe that employee permits are hang tags. And that would be the permit that a resident would get if they live on a street where there's an employee restriction along their property frontage. It's a little confusing, but.
Thank you.
Anne, sorry. I see you're driving again. There you go.
It's not a sticker. It's something that could be transferred from one car to another.
That's my understanding. Yes.
Yep. And Amendola nodding, yes.
Great.
Yeah, sorry. The employee one's a hanging placard. Yep.
I mean, how many could be provided per household?
We usually do how many cars are registered to the house.
Okay, thank you.
Can I suggest, folks, let's move to accepting public discussion. Let those folks ask questions. Once we've done that, had some of the questions answered, we can close the public hearing and then the board can ask many more specific questions before we move on to the discussion of a vote. So I'm seeing So I'm seeing heads nodding, so let's 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 move forward with that. Caitlin, who do we do we have? Do you want to let folks in?
Yep. We'll start with Lisa Egan first.
Great. Lisa, I think you're if you're listed as Brendan Egan, then then we have the right person. Lisa, are you there? We're not hearing you. You're on mute. Thank you. That's now it's Lisa. We still have you on mute, though. There you go.
Thank you. I'm just trying to start the video. Sorry, I just got let in. I apologize for that. Hi, everyone. Thanks so much for all the careful thought that has gone into all the parking preparation.
I should have turned down your the whatever your broadcast is in the background, please.
No, I'm not. Hi, can you guys, can everyone hear me now? Oh, okay.
I I hear myself in the background speaking.
Hi, everyone. Thanks so much for all the careful thought that has gone into all the parking preparation.
He says that. Do you have the the broadcast running on RCTV or YouTube or Facebook?
Yes, I need to shut down my other window. Apologies. Let me just do that. Not done it in this way before. Okay, I think I fixed my technical difficulties.
Please, I think you're all set.
Okay, sorry. This isn't my first Zoom, but it felt like it for a second there. I just wanted to say thanks very much for all the the preparation. I know this has been like a year of meetings and a lot of discussions around. Parking and all the different details and recommendations. I think it's very challenging right now to make a change with the impact of the pandemic on our local businesses. I do know that there are, but you know, the holiday season is really important. The number one employer in the country and in the state is restaurants. I feel like making it more difficult to shop locally and in Reading. It's a perceived hindrance, even if the first 30 minutes is free. I just am concerned that it will be. Another challenge for our shopkeepers and with so many services, retail and restaurants struggling. To do it now seems. I I just worry that it's going to be caught become a big problem. I think the timing is difficult. I know that the state road diet has been postponed until spring. Because they don't feel like it's a good time to make such a change or study, you know, the economic climate and parking and. Such, so I just wanted to say, I think if the state is holding off on making big decisions to our roadways. Which kind of ties in with this, perhaps we should follow suit. I hate to kick the can because I know it's been a lot of meetings already, but I just really feel like with everything that our businesses are dealing with and all of the. The feedback that we've gotten either via email or Facebook, that it might not be the most advantageous time. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Lisa.
Can I ask Lisa a question?
Please.
I was wondering, Lisa, are you are you viewing all of the recommendations this way or just the kiosks or the or the package? As something that should be deferred.
Thank you. I mean, from my perspective, I think the perceived challenges with the paid parking is what. Jumps out to me and that I've received the most feedback on when I'm out and about talking to businesses or residents. When I think of places where the MAPC study that Reading did a few years ago pointed to where a lot of people in Reading shop. Places that come to mind are Woburn, Linfield. Wakefield Burlington and to the best of my knowledge, none of them have paid parking. And I know change is hard, but I am worried about being the first. When it will just be something that might deter people, even if it's a tiny amount, even 10 cents an hour, it's more the. The perceived hassle than it is the actual money.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lisa. Julie, a quick question, just on following up on that. What is the the we didn't let you put up the timeline discussion at all, but as it relates to paid parking, the recommendation. What would be the implementation timing of that?
Let me just pull up the timeline. That's a really good question. I was thinking, oh, maybe I could show that. So. But sorry, it's really far down here. Okay, here it is. And it's two different timelines, you'll see, and hopefully it's not too small, but. Let me see if I can make it bigger. All right, so. Basically, if you were to vote tonight, there are certain things we could start working on tomorrow. We actually have a staff meeting already scheduled for tomorrow. To see whether or whether we need to make any. Start working on this, right? So certain things can be done sooner. So police department, they order signs or sorry, permits every year. So. That's something they already know how to do and we just figure out exactly what we're talking about. And that could be maybe implemented for January. Again, with like any sort of street signs that are needed for the downtown areas based on any regulation changes you vote on tonight, like that's something a DPW is familiar with doing and could do. Pretty quickly. I don't want to say pretty quickly, maybe for January, right? Kiosks, we were never thinking about doing those in the fall. There's a lot more work to be done. We have to do vetting of the different vendors. We wanted to really. Interview other towns and see what their challenges have been. I've started doing it. I've done it with a couple of towns, but I would really want to like understand more. We'd need to like look into parking at vendors. We'd need to figure out exact locations for them and then what what the funding source is going to be. Delivery installation will take time and that's not something we would do in the winter. So, you know, we'd really be thinking of actually putting the kiosks in maybe in the spring or the summer of next year.
Thanks, Julie. Great. All right.
Mark, I have one quick question, sorry.
Oh, please.
You know, quickly, Julie, is this a presentation on the kiosk specifically? For both lots?
The proposal is to put them in both the Brandy Court lot and the CBS lot.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thanks, Lisa. Caitlin, who do we have next?
Next, we have Dave Talbot.
Hi, Dave. You there?
Yeah, can you see me?
No, but we can hear you.
Okay. Hello, everybody. Thank you. And I I lost the thread there for a second. So I missed the last minute or two, but thanks for your efforts and and the participation. Of of the public now in the process. I wanted to ask if I could just have maybe four minutes because there's a neighbor that I wanted to speak for. I want to highlight for you the fact that Linden Street between, by the way, for the record, Dave Talbot, 75 Linden Street. Linden Street between Woburn and Lowell is a residential street, unlike some of those other ones you mentioned Chapin or. Whether it was Gould or Green Down, which are in the business zone. You know, we're an all residential street, you know, we're willing to 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 take our share. What's been proposed here isn't just the employee regime where a resident can get a sticker. Most significantly, the proposal, which nobody understood until this weekend, was that the entire left side of the street. Would be made no parking. It's been parking on both sides for for 50 years. And I know that because I will now speak for one of my neighbors, if I may, Jean Thompson, who lives at 48 Linden Street. On the left side, I went down on Sunday when I first heard about this from my neighbor. And her side. Is going to be made no parking. Jean is 86 years old. She lives alone. She'd never heard anything about this. There really wasn't outreach and I'm sort of surprised about, I heard some comments made about emails being sent to neighbors. This did not happen. The people most affected are the people on the left side of Linden Street. This is nine houses with about 15 residential units that have been parking there. I asked Jean what she thought. She said she's against it. She'd never heard anything about it. Again, she's lived there for 50 years. She's 86 years old. I I really think, you know, we need to take a a a second look at the Linden Street piece and really recognize how. Incredibly disruptive this is to the street. And so, and I understand what what Julie said about the safety. But the informal arrangement is fine and many, many streets are of a similar narrowness and have. Parking on both sides, you know, all over the downtown. We can, we can get into that at another meeting. What I would ask, and I think there's others queued up, is really, there was a notification that the burden on Linden Street is. Is really major here to take parking away from the entire left side of the street. You have a better solution, which and it all all you're going to do is push cars into all these other streets. You look to the left of the pink. Highlighted Linden Street. These are all similar streets to ours. Kingston Bancroft, Mount Vernon School, Dudley. You know, high, they're all in the same situation as us. They have no regulation whatsoever. So when you do this on one street, you're pushing. You're making problems on the one street and then you're going to push all these extra capacity if you do this on these other streets and you're going to hear from those people. And, you know, it doesn't solve anything. I think you should leave it informal and and if you rethink this, that this whole area that I'm talking about between. Woburn and Middlesex, I think we could all, I would get behind and I think many of my neighbors would. In the greater good of the town to help the employee parking situation, we could have this mix of employee permitting. And resident permitting in this entire district and there'd be lots of capacity there. The second benefit of that is one that hasn't come up yet, which is there are many people who drive into this these neighborhoods from out of town. In order to go to the Reading train station and get the express train and a cheaper fare, they park all over these streets. Linden is one, but not the only one. You have a lot of capacity there being used by people that use the neighborhoods for this purpose. If you were to impose this kind of permit regime throughout the neighborhood, you would get rid of all of those. What the would the word be is squatters or sort of dead parkers who who you'd get rid of them because they couldn't do that anymore. You would create lots of capacity and I think that, you know, that would also get buy in from all these streets and people would appreciate that. We'd make lots of room for the employee spaces that are so badly needed and that I hope we can find. And then you're not going to just sort of really drop the hammer on one street and do nothing on all the others. So. That's the gist of what I want to say. I I it's it's been late news. I'm someone who's fairly involved in town. This was late news to me and to everybody else on my street about the about the no parking on the opposite side. And I think maybe even there's some people in this room who didn't know that either. So anyway, I think I've made my point and probably over speaking to get back to Jean Thompson, who's lived there for 50 years. I think we can do better about notifying people when major changes like this. Are proposed for in front of their house and I'd leave it there. Happy to follow up if anybody has a question back for me or to continue participating. But I do hope you you withhold this and do not impose this on Linden Street. Instead, leave it informal. Let's come up with a permit regime for the wider neighborhood, a bigger, better solution that's not going to cause problems for all of you. And all of these other streets down down the road. Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, Dave. All right, who who is is next?
We have Bernie Horn next.
Great.
Hi, Bernie. Good evening. Can you hear and see me?
Yes.
Great. Don't know if I can share a screen. I cannot share a screen. First of all, so let me just get down to the points here. I just have two questions for the board first. I have sent some email I sent in in response to a request for me to more fully detail the outline that I. Submitted, I was asked to provide more detail and I will take that as read. However. That's a bit unfair for me to assume because I just sent it at five o'clock and. So maybe the board could just give me a sense for whether they have been able to read my thing. I would be happy to share it with. Everybody on the screen if I can do so. If not, but anybody has. Has anybody not read it or? Thanks. Second question is just, I know I'm going to make a lot of, I'm going to make some quick references to the Nelson Nygaard report. I just want to make sure that we understand the full extent of the data set that was used to base the utilization ratios and so forth on. I'm just wondering. If the board could just relay what their understanding was as far as the extent of the data set. That was used in terms of the seasonality, the, you know, the difference in days, time of time of year. That that study was based on and and the many, the many documents that were shared with respect to that. Now, not Mark, because I know he knows the answer. Maybe Anne or 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 Vanessa. Carlo, give me a sense for what you know to be the data set for the Nelson Nygaard utilization data.
With respect to the season?
Yeah, like how many like the how how extensive is the data set and so forth?
I don't think that data was ever that level of depth was provided.
Yeah, it was in then it was in and again. Well, let me just point out that, you know, the study was based on one day of data. On the and that's on page one of the 20, you know, the 2018 report. So in other words, all the utilization ratios that you're seeing and I see them here on the screen, that's only one day. And so when I when I started to try to understand why my experience was not consistent with. The actual data in this report. Then I understood that this report that you're basing the decision on is only one day. It doesn't address the issues of, you know, seasonality and winter, more people need to do that. I mean, I ride my bike.
You may have either Facebook or YouTube open in the background.
Are you talking to me, Mark?
Yeah, I think what we're finding is that the delay of the broadcast, it it comes through for some people. I don't know. Is it is it you or? Can I have you mute, please? That that may be part of it also. Everyone should be on mute other than the speaker. Actually, Caitlin, can you put Dave on mute? Thank you. Okay, let's try that again. Great. Just a quick question on 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 timing. I know that you had quite a bit of information you were hoping to share.
We'll be I'll be brief.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And I appreciate Lisa and the and the former and the prior speaker, you know, were very efficient in their time and I will be too. So, yeah, so look, my point is simply to say that the 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 experience that actual users have. Is very different than what appears to be the recommendations are being based on. And I and I know there's been a tremendous amount of work done on this. And judging from all the many people that I've talked to about it, there's clearly a whole lot of different opinions. Let me just point out that I think that the Nelson Nygaard report does mention the fact that. We are, we have a very, very complex and way more complex set of regulations that that probably should be simplified and that. And in my opinion, that could clearly help. Wakefield, Stonemelrose, Reading, Nor and over North Reading. Have one, maybe two. So my recommendation would be to substantially reduce the number of parking categories and regulations. Ideally to two, but a maximum of three to four. And this simplification, I think, will solve a great deal of problems. The other issue is that I think that to reduce the Reading resident only spaces. And reduce the the pricing on that from 150 plus. Per household to back to the 25 plus $10 for an additional car at each resident. I think this would. Help to solve a lot of the problems. I know that I I am one of those so called squatters. That needs to park outside because I don't have the resident sticker. I know I'm a resident of Reading, but I'm not considered a resident for parking purposes. So that's the other issue. And I think that if we were to eliminate some of these other categories like the employee parking. To the degree that we liberalize a lot more of the spaces, I think that would solve a great deal of the problems. I think you've seen. Just in the final throes of trying to make. I think that would solve a great deal of the problems. I think you've seen, just in the final throes of trying to make a decision here, you've already got a, a lot of questions from just two people, including Vanessa, who had a very important question about what, what do you do? So the more regulations and complexity you add to the system, the more difficult it is to navigate, and the more difficult it is for people to try to navigate the system. So, again, short-term, medium-term, I think that would be the short-term recommendations. The medium-term, I would put as twelve to eighteen months after the capacity, the complexity has been reduced. And then the natural supply and demand balance would start to be understood in a post-COVID world. And I think that this is very important to try to do because the, the, the high parking for resident-only, that, that charge, I can't emphasize to the select board enough that this is a very divisive way to, to split our town. And I know a lot of the people in the select board have been very vocal about trying, you know, why is Reading so divided? Why do we have these factions? You know, it's great to talk about that, but when policy actually divides the people, you know, you heard that now I'm a squatter in the minds of somebody else, when all I'm trying to do is get to work. And if I don't pay up, you know, while, while somebody else doesn't have to pay up to get to work, you know, it creates a problem when we're trying to look for people to support things like two and a half overrides. So I think that this is a real issue. You know, I, I've been forty years in the investment business. You know, I understand the issue of market economics. I understand the, the, the pricing discipline and what that does. I'm also a founding member of the MIT Center for Finance and Policy. And I realize that there's a point where public policy and market economics don't always equal one another. And so that's, I, I guess what I'm trying to do is, is lobby for a much more, you know, kind of equal footing among our residents to try to bring people together up to some degree. I won't cover unintended consequences.
Yeah, I need to wrap you here. We're, we're running low.
I won't, I won't deal with the unintended consequences. I think Lisa has, has done that. But I will say that, you know, a, a kiosk and, and the resident fees as they are are very regressive, especially to low-income people and to the newer, younger residents that presumably we're trying to attract because younger residents will support our schools more than older residents who can afford to pay it. So again, that's the point. The other thing is the feedback I'd give is that the, you know, I've tried my best to, to do my homework, and I'd like to propose to the board that the parking, you know, traffic and, traffic and, and parking commission include six residents of different backgrounds and, and uses, business, commuting, and so forth, workers and so forth. My view is that the, that you're not getting the right feedback, that it's somewhat being filtered, and that these, you, the actual users of the system don't have any real voice in terms of what's, what's being proposed.
I need to stop in there where I've got a few other people who are on bedtime with kids.
No, I didn't think I'd use much more time than the other people, but let's-
You're at about ten minutes, right, Yolanda?
Any question for me?
Thank you, Bernie. I did just wanna correct myself. The information, the data you had questioned was in fact in one of the previous presentations from Nygaard.
Say that again?
I had stated that, that I had stated that the data was not present in some of the earlier presentations, but it is in fact in an earlier one from, I believe, this year.
The data on when they-
The data on parking and, and when it was taken, et cetera.
I can also verify that some of the, the utilization information that I showed in a prior presentation is not all of the utilization information that we got. The Nelson Nygaard study actually went out on a couple different days, and that it's, it's, I, I believe I pointed Bernie to the correct presentation from Nelson Nygaard, but it does show that there was and on a Thursday.
It was a Wednesday and a Thursday, but it encompassed basically, basically one day. So when you're trying to analyze data, you're looking for means, means, maximums, the number of data points and so forth. But when you have a sample size of virtually one day, it really isn't the way to make good public policy decisions. That's all I'm trying to point out. So the other thing that I think I would point out is on the Nelson Nygaard study, they recommend against putting in kiosks. That's only what they suggest to be a very long-term solution after we've reduced dramatically the complexity of the system, and then seeing what the fallout of that, where the natural supply and demand actually balance out. So I would think that to the degree that you vote for kiosks, that would be against the Nelson Nygaard report that, as I've read it. So thanks, thanks, everybody. Any other questions for me? Thank you, Bernie. Thank you for all the input and research and, you know, we provided time. It was very helpful. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you. Can I ask, I had a request from a resident who needs to put her kids to bed, Brooke Sacreada. Is she on the list, and it might be possible to let her in?
She is, yes.
Can we accommodate the children here? One comment in the background, just, I know, I got a note from, from Dave Talbot, just that the, the comment he was bringing up about people who aren't, don't have commuter stickers. He's talking about out-of-town residents that are coming to Reading and then parking on the streets to use the commuter rail. Hi, Brooke.
Hi there. How are you? Thank you. If, if you chose me over someone else, I appreciate it. As I'm sure my neighbors do, as they start hearing my kids screaming because it's bedtime. So, thank you. Thank you. I, I apologize. I, I was trying to follow along online, and it got to a certain point where it just became the spinning wheel of death. So I probably have maybe a little bit less of the information than I should. My family and I are residents of seventy-six Linden Street, so we're in that outer core, the pink highlighted section of your map, and we're located at the top of the hill in the residential section of the street, really between Woburn and Lowell. And so I wanted to speak today just to bring up some serious concerns around the upcoming vote with parking, specifically that we had no knowledge of any of these true changes to our street in particular until, quite honestly, yesterday. I did hear that there were some notifications and things that went out, but if I'm really honest, you know, as you all know, we are in the middle of a pandemic, and as a very young family, I am inundated with information around school and Zooms and school openings and virtual learning. And I feel like anything about these parking changes, if it did come our way, has been very difficult to find, pushed to the bottom of the pile, kind of buried beneath some of these real COVID concerns. And so until yesterday, I really had none of this information to really think through. And so my main goal tonight is to ask you guys for a delay in the vote or, or no for right now, but I did want to kind of air some of my concerns tonight. The first one being that, when, one of the things that was talked about with that pink outer core is that it would be employee all-day parking, which essentially would leave me no parking at all to park in front of my own home. Now, I did hear there's potentially a sticker that I could get. That's what, the last thing I heard really before that it went out on Facebook for me. But it doesn't address the fact that, as, again, a parent with two small kids and two people trying to work from home, school's not open. I am relying on carpools, elderly parents, family members, all these different people as a village to help us through this problem. And when you start eliminating parking for them, there's nowhere for them to go. And it's just, you know, to not be able to park in front of my own door to carry in groceries or to have my elderly parents come and help watch out the kids, or a tutor, or a teacher, or a care provider becomes exceptionally difficult, and it's not something I think that's really been well thought through when it comes to guest parking. Additionally, when you think about the outer core proposal, there's no businesses on our block at all. This is a residential part of Linden Street, and it's just pushing everything into our neighborhood and then continually moving out. And it's not taking into account the entire neighborhood as a whole, from Middlesex to, you know, Woburn. That whole neighborhood, all of those streets are being ignored, and it's just our street that's really being looked at. And I guess I'm concerned as to why they haven't looked at ways to maybe do small sections of employee parking across five or six streets versus an entire street of residents no longer being able to have residential parking on their street with guests and the ability for, you know, someone to drop, come by and drop my kid off from ballet class while I'm working full-time. So I really think there's not a lot of thought through that part of it that's concerning to me. We have a lot of elderly neighbors on our street who absolutely are not gonna be able to walk up and down a hill if they have to park at the top of the hill and walk down, particularly in the winter. And then beyond the, the issue really of notification, it, it's a couple of different things. One, I've petitioned for several years, and I've lived here now for eight and a half, to get help from the town on putting up sidewalks, curbing, to preserve the tree line. I've been turned down every single time. I have people that pull up as it is onto the lawn, onto the sidewalk. We have little kids trying to ride bikes. We've gone to the preschool down the street in which in the winter, even this past winter, I had a three- and four-year-old hand in hand in the middle of the street in the ice storm because nobody is shoveling any of those walks. The condominiums don't plow it, and so there's been really no talk through of what that snow removal is gonna look like. And with no curbs and all-day employee parking, it's just gonna continue to erode that tree line. And that's something I'd love to, the town to really consider further before passing some of these things through. So I guess my, my ask today is just, in the time that we're in with the pandemic and so many things, you know, everybody's working from home. No one's allowed to go into their office. My husband's office won't even be open until February in downtown Boston. So we're moving all of a sudden, street parking and limiting the ability for people to stop by to drop off and help out with the kids is, is really just an extra burden on top of everything else that I really would hope that you guys delay and really think through. Or at the very least, for that outer core, say no to that part of this parking plan and keep it to the downtown part. Because again, this is a residential street, and I feel like these heavily regulated parking things are being pushed through with really very little knowledge of us residents and any consideration of, of what our thoughts were. No one asked me. I didn't get an email. If I did, it was buried under a lot of stuff from the town. And with schools not open, this is just honestly another, it's just making it more difficult than it needs to be, is my personal kind of thought process. So I thank you for hearing my rant on the topic. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Brooke, any, any questions for Brooke?
Feel like I talked really fast. Did it make sense?
Thank you, Brooke. Thank you for sharing your story, because everyone's family is unique, and now we're all squashed into this town twenty-four by seven. So I just wanted to ask you today, how is the parking on your street? Do you have any issues finding parking? What, is it like Somerville on your street? Because I-
No, I would say today, I don't personally have a lot of trouble finding parking typically if I have guests, and I'm not throwing wild parties by any means, don't get me wrong. They can find a spot. There tends to be a lot of people who park at the front end of my street, or the end, I guess, because it's one-way, over near Lowell Street. But again, everyone's, there's no curbing, there's no sidewalk. People are up onto the sidewalk. There's constantly trash in everybody's tree lawn, nip bottles everywhere. And I feel like if now you're inviting town employees to purposely park there, which maybe they didn't realize there was space to park there as of now, you're just going to increase that potential problem without having addressed the sidewalks, the curbing, or any of that information as well. So it's been honestly fine as it is, with the exception of the lack of curbing sidewalks and, and trash that's building up from people who are figuring out that, yes, there's spaces available there. I guess my biggest concern is like, that's a residential area of the street, and none of the other neighborhoods, none of the other streets in the same neighborhood are being asked to change their parking. And so like, it might, I have no family in town. We are all working from home. School is not open. And so if I have my sister come up to help me for a week, she can't park. Like, that's super frustrating, right? And I don't, yes, I might be able to get a sticker for me, but what about anybody else who's helping me out, right? So like, if I'm having somebody shuttle one kid to school or to a pod or to a tutor and then come back, like, then they can't find parking, and they're walking up in the middle of the winter from the bottom of the hill that's not plowed, and this, you know, the sidewalks aren't cleared, that's just a dangerous situation. So I would really hope that from a residential standpoint, you really consider those pink outer core, or whatever you wanna call it, that, that's in fact a residential street. There's not one single business on our street.
Thank you.
I think we're gonna let you put your kids to bed.
Thank you. They really need to go. Open school, open school. That's my last thing. Okay.
Brooke. Caitlin, who's next?
Rob Skinner.
Rob Skinner. Hi, Rob. We don't have video, but I think we see-
Perfect. Thank you. Can you hear me?
We can. Please, if you could just introduce yourself and your address, please, we'd appreciate it.
Sure. It's Rob Skinner, sixty-two Sanborn Street. First, I would say I would, I completely agree with Brooke and Dave. The first I've heard of this, now, we've known that there's parking issues throughout town, but the first I've heard about it was a text message I got yesterday. And apparently, there was a notice in the water bill. I, I find it ironic, if I was to go for a variance, I'd have to send certified registered mail and multiple public notices to all of my neighbors, but where the town to do something, I know, I get a text message and an extraneous piece of paper in the water bill. I just don't think that is a good faith effort when the changes are so significant. So that's just a comment. So I live at the top of Sanborn Street, across the street from the Northeast Ballet School, which went in about five years ago, and we were told, and we fought this, we were told that there would only be drop-offs to dance school, maybe between three and five on weeknights. That's fine. This, the dance school is now turned into a conservancy. Drop-off starts at seven AM. They go to seven PM, six days a week. My driveway is constantly blocked by parents who don't really seem to care. I haven't been able to get the police department really interested in even writing parking tickets. So now we wanna invite more people. We've already done our fair share with the dancing school, and the woman that runs the school is a very nice woman. She can't really control, you know, her customers, I guess, but we've already put up with this, and now we're going to invite town employees. And I'm not, I'm actually confused. Could you clear up, when we say employee parking, is that only Reading town employees, or is that an employee of CBS, for instance? So that's all employees, right? So if I start a business and I come into town and I can't park my employees, it's disingenuous to force that requirement on the residents, right? I, I just don't, I guess I don't understand that. A better solution to me would be, why don't we buy the Walgreens or the Rite Aid, knock the building down, and make a municipal parking lot? To force this out into the residential areas, I think, is an unfair burden on the residents, is, you know. If, I have two children right now, I have two older children. They're both home from college because of the pandemic. They're parking on the street. What happens when this goes into play, takes effect, and can my kids no longer park on the street? If, you know, to Brooke's point, if I have a gathering mid-week and I invite six people over, where are they supposed to park? It is, almost seems like an unfair taking for my property because we're gonna have CVS employees parking in front of my house, but I'm not allowed to. So that's another comment. The last thing I would say is, I've read up on this in the last twenty-four hours. Thankfully, one of my neighbors alerted me to this. We've got, it looks like an inner core and an outer core, and we're trying to make all of these changes during a pandemic when traffic patterns, work patterns are all disrupted. It almost seems like this is a phased approach. Why would we not start with the inner core, make the change, and let's see what the impact is before we go to the outer core, right? Phase one is the inner core. I'm all for two-hour parking downtown. I think there are squatters that sit there all day, and that's probably not appropriate, right? Because I try to go downtown, and it would be nice if the space is turned over. I would say free two-hour parking, and then you have to leave, or you get a ticket, is completely appropriate for a downtown business district. But why would we not try to solve that problem first and see how that works? And then move to phase two, because right now commuter prob, uh, traffic patterns and all are, are so disrupted. Any change we made now might not even work in twelve months when hopefully things go back to normal. So those are my comments. I, I think pushing it out into the residential streets when we haven't even addressed the problem downtown. Let's fix the downtown problem first, which is the inner core, and see how that works. And see how that works and let's move to the outer core at a later date. But I think it's too big of an issue. Given the lack of notice, quite frankly, to solve over Zoom. At a minimum, I would. I would urge the board to put off the vote until this gets a a fair and open. Hearing in a in a better setting than Zoom, quite honestly. And I'm good. I have no kids to put to bed, but thank you.
Thanks, Rob. Any questions for for Rob Elison? Nope.
I was gonna say, should we clarify his question about what his kids can do if we make these changes?
Please, that'd be great.
So your question about what your college age kids can do if they need to park on the street is that. They could go to the police department and apply for an employee permit. We have a program in place for residents. To do exactly that when they have a, an employee parking restriction along their property frontage.
Okay, so what do I do if I have a birthday party and I invite ten people over? Do they all have to go to the police department and apply for a permit?
No, so there will be public two hour parking. I should have clarified earlier that. The restrictions are only proposed during the hours of eight to five Monday through Friday, so it would not include weekends or evenings. The. These areas where we looked to increase locations for employee parking were chosen. For different reasons, but partly because we felt like there were the the homes that were there. You know, had dedicated off street parking and whether that's it's sufficient or not is is an open question, but. It does seem that most homes along Linden Street, Sanborn Street, those other areas that along the the eastern side of Main Street where we're looking at this. Have dedicated off street parking. So there would still be opportunities for people to come visit you and park on the street.
Okay. Thank you, Julie.
Sure.
And is the possibility that the employee parking for college students could include a requirement to do chores at the house?
That'd be fun. That would actually be great. Maybe they could put Brooke's kids to bed.
Thank you, Rob.
Thank you.
Caitlin, we have another person coming?
Yes. Karen Rose Gillis.
Karen Rose Gillis. So missing always so quick on the on the uptake here. Karen, we're seeing. You on screen, not with video and your audio says it's now connected. Are you able to hear us, Karen? Karen, are you there? Nope, yeah, you're on mute. Can you unmute yourself, Karen? Caitlin, can you push a a request to unmute to her?
Is not letting me unmute her for some reason.
Oh, Karen, you there?
Oh, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yay. There we go. Well, you can't see me, but that's, I'll take one. Oh, there we go. I got it now. Hi, my name's Karen Rose Gillis. I live at sixty-nine Linden Street. I'm not going to repeat anything that anyone else said tonight. Because everybody has. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I unmute.
And see you both. Yep.
Oh, great. I had to unmute something. So I'm not going to repeat anything that anybody has to say that has already been said. My issue now is that. Now I can't hear you.
We were all quiet, but.
Oh, okay, sorry. On the lower level of Linden by the church, I just wanted to point out that on the. Proposed side where they're going to have the employee two hour parking, there's an embankment that runs past the condos in the front of my house. And as a result of that, if that's where people are going to be parking, which we're hoping you vote no tonight. Snow is an issue. If there's a passenger in the car, they won't be able to get out of their car unless they park two feet into the street even farther. And that's kind of a consideration that I really think should be. Taken. So I just wanted to point that out, that the lower part of the street is really difficult for parking on that side, which is proposed to be the permit parking.
Great. In any, I assume you're in support of the other comments and any other aspects you wanted to share?
That was pretty much, I mean, Brooke did a great job of explaining all the different issues. I think that the notice issue is a huge problem and I really would appreciate. The board and the town basically giving a lot more thought to how they inform residents of what's going on in their neighborhoods. I mean, I think. Eight months ago would have been a great time to have all of us involved in these discussions before they got as far away as they got. The only way I found out about this whole thing was I happened to be on the website. Looking for fence permit information and I saw downtown. Parking issues and I still didn't think it had anything to do with me because this is the residential part and we would never think that we were part of the downtown parking issue. So. I happened to click on it and this is the middle of August and I happened to find the map and I just happened to be like, well, wait a minute, what are they proposing? So. I went to the one of the Zoom meetings and as informative as it was. And the maps and all the information, it really didn't answer any of the questions I had for what would happen if, you know, what about guests? What about parking? You know, I have four cars in my driveway now. You know, it was, it was, it was nice for Julie to be able to get information from us, but we really didn't get a lot of information back. And then. It kind of dropped to the side and none of my neighbors knew about it. And once I started talking about it. Even last night's message, it still didn't impact that it had to do with us because it referenced downtown parking. So I think that there needs to be a much more open. Dialogue or open communication to say exactly what it was. Downtown parking to us is on the other side of Auburn Street and I think this was a very deceptive. Way to do it. We would have been happy to participate in January with the meetings and given tons of suggestions and I think. It would have been great to be involved, but we never really heard about it. So I. That's, that's where I stand on the whole notice issue. I just think it was very poorly done and I probably imagine. It's poorly done with a lot of other projects that are done in town and I think the residents would be a much. More willing to be pleasant and help if they knew what was going on before it was a done deal.
Great. Questions for members? Nope. Thanks, Karen. Much appreciated.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone else in the waiting room, Caitlin? We do not. So. If there are people who are watching or listening. That would like to still make a comment. We would invite you over the next couple of minutes to send an email to selectboard@ci.rating.us. And we will, we'll try to get you in. If we could. Julie, you had suggested that maybe Matt would have some comments. Maybe it's a good time to allow for that to take place. Still allowing some folks to come in if they want to join in the public hearing and then after that we'll close the public hearing. So Matt, is that right with you, Julie?
Yeah, that's fine. And Matt, I just let you know, I can screen share your presentation if you need me to.
I mean, I guess there's just from listening to all the comments and what everyone's been discussing, I think there's some, you know, just clarification. In terms of the study that was done and how we look at. Parking in a larger district. And so I think the first thing just to understand is that when you're doing a study. Just based on how you have to conduct it, you come up with a general study area. Typically for a downtown study area, we do look at those areas and we work with the communities to. Pick the core area, which is, you know, typically the where the most of the businesses are, which we did. And then you. Really look at the surrounding streets that have the greatest connectivity to and from. That core. And that's a lot of, that's how we will actually, that's where we usually document the number of spaces that are there, what the current regulations are, et cetera. I just wanted to say, I mean, there are definitely two distinct, I think, concerns or issues that have been raised tonight. One is, you know, the idea of changing regulations within the downtown, particularly the paid kiosks. And then the other is the residential. I think the one thing to to note about when it comes to the concern over employee parking. When these recommendations come together, the idea is. Is there's two pieces to this and I just wanted to try to explain this and I've been taking some notes. So the first thing is this is not saying that every person that works in downtown is going to be parking on these streets. The reality is when you look at a lot of the detailed data that's been presented with both within the report, but also in different. Presentations we've given, the vast majority of parking in Reading is actually public, is privately owned. And so, for instance, you know, when you look at this. Oh, there's over one thousand five hundred and fifty-six off street. Privately held, privately controlled parking spaces. That's where many of the employees work at different businesses. And that's where they park. That's where residents in many of the, and many buildings, we don't, that's not counting like people with driveways and garages. Park and, you know, it's a apartment and condominium complexes. The reality is, is that you only have three hundred and twenty-one total public off street spaces. And of those about a hundred and sixty are within two lots we've been discussing. So you really do have a very limited supply of publicly available parking. You know, some of the park, public parking talking is like Town Hall and things like that. So what we try to do is we try to weigh what we're looking at. And the reality is, is that. You, you do have a a complex downtown in terms of how your streets are arranged. You have, you have a commuter rail station. You have your kind of your mains. Spine along Main Street, a developing spine, even. As we talk along Haven, I've actually been working with the town of Reading over the years, not just in Nels Nygaard, but in previous capacity at other jobs. So I've really seen it develop. And so I think that's really important. There was one comment, for instance, you know, so why would we do this? Where the report says that paid parking would be a long term. What we actually noted is that in the medium term, when we look at eighty-five percent utilization, which is your key metric, that's when people perceive parking to be full. That we suggested a pilot. And that's really the way you should be looking at this. This is your pilot for these off street lots, which are have been consistently, particularly when your CBS, the CBS ladder, the upper lot. During your peak during daytime, it does exceed that. It's over ninety percent full. And that's when you actually have to start really thinking about how that parking is being used. And so the reason why a pilot would be appropriate and using kiosks and paid parking is that it's very difficult to manage. Parking that allows for two, four hour. It's very time and staff intensive when you do not have things like meters. So the idea that a lot of those parking spaces are being occupied by people who are using those within the, the. I would say the acceptable time limits is going to be much more difficult to manage. So. That's one of the advantages of adding that kiosk, because what you can do is you can really start managing that because people will make a choice. Will they circle? Will they find parking on street because it's free? Will they opt to get an employee pass because it's now an option? All those pieces, because it's a very complex beast. So the idea is this is about learning how to manage your parking through different strategies and some of that, you know, is. Offering that free parking on street and there's, I'm trying to remember. I was just looking and I was writing it down. But you have far more on street parking in your downtown that's publicly available than you do in this lot. So. You're really leaving a lot of spaces available for people who do not want to pay and then, but if they do and they're going to be there longer. Then they have the option of going and paying for that space. I think the idea of employees, it's much easier for an, I would say. A free parking lot to offer for like, you know, up to four hours of parking for that one car than to move. You know, in the middle of the day and come back. So I think there's just. You have to look at it from a slightly different lens in terms of, I would say, just why is this being done? Because there's been data. When we go back to the utilization, yes, we did. Basically, we partially part of a Tuesday and then a full day Thursday, but we also look back to the two thousand nine study. Which we did and it was actually fairly consistent. And one of the main pieces. That was starting to drive some of the concern was development in terms of the parking. And when we look at, you know, Haven Street, for instance, with more development now that has been built. That's when you really start seeing the pressures that can apply and it can be often, you know, for someone to say like a visitor. So if someone in. The downtown has visitors coming and they're taking up that key parking that is needed for your businesses to succeed, that's a problem. And that's why we start talking about these kinds of strategies. You want to make sure you have that available parking because that's what's essential for those downtown businesses to. I would say not only to survive but thrive. And it's also weighed with the idea that you're adding more people to the downtown, which you've done, which is great too, because you're actually adding it basically a. A captive audience for many of these new businesses or existing businesses. So that's how we start to look at it and then you start to kind of radiate out. That's why you you place that employee parking on some of the neighboring streets during the day, Monday through Friday. As we said, this does not affect. That does not give them valid parking on Saturday, Sunday. It's really during those key commuting hours where you have a lot of different. I would say competing interests, whether it's the commuter parking, like I don't, I. I wouldn't call someone like squatting. I think people do and make the choices that are best for them. And if that means using free parking somewhere, that's an unregulated street, that's what they'll do and they'll walk further. I think if there are some dedicated streets, that's really good. Because then it forms an understanding of the system. I'm not gonna lie, there's always, there's always differences of opinions. There's also. Very different realities and circumstances and I do this in many different communities. So I think there's been a lot of thought in this. I know that the town has been studying this for a long time. But I think what we're really talking about here are changes that are intended to benefit the downtown. And I think as people were saying, I think there's a lot of good things that are placed at the fact that on an employee street that you can still get a pass for free as a resident. That's great. I also think it's also about enforcement. I think you, there has to be policies for enforcement on these streets and that's part of any strategy. The idea isn't to start having people come. You know, I would say, sorry, your enforcement or your police coming down every street every ten fifteen minutes in those residential zones, they're really in place so that when there a problem arises. That then you can start looking and then that's when you send that enforcement to make sure that people start understanding. So, you know, the, well, there's a lot, I would say, there's a lot to unlock here. But the idea is to create a strategy that can be not only. Formalized so that there is a predictability to the system, but also then there's going to be some policies and procedures that you all have to discuss. On the other side about how often you enforce, what that means. How are you giving warnings out as opposed to tickets? So for instance, I know there's always concern when you go to paid parking. If you install a kiosk, for instance, and you start ticketing that first day, that would be ridiculous. You'd have to do some kind of. I would say a warning system, you know, where you get little notes on your heart, by the way, this is, this is change. You can add things like a free, you know, one free ticket for that person who didn't realize it and many cities have that in towns. So I would just like to say that, you know, there is, there was, there was a lot of thought and I've been having conversations over the last year. On a regular basis, you know, just to kind of start talking through, you know, is this the, is this the point where this pilot would be smart? And to me, it is from what I have learned through all of my work in parking, this does seem the right time. Particularly because you're offering a lot of free parking on street. I think what you're just trying to do is you're starting to really create a more managed. District parking, for instance. So. I know I just said a lot, but my brain goes kind of crazy with all this because there are so many pieces with it. But it is about a strategy and it is ultimately about fairness. Because for instance, I think someone said, you know, I think the common comment that comes like I'm a resident of the town. And that's a very valid point. However. For people, for instance, I don't know where different people live, but for someone who lives in a more suburban street that's nowhere near business, you're not going to have people coming and parking in your neighborhood. When you are living in a downtown and you are in that more walkable area and people are coming to that, there is some additional needs for. Regulation and that's why they, that's why that happens. So in my mind, that's actually a very fair policy. I think that's actually protecting. The residents of that, of that area, that downtown adjacent area, so that they have the same. Ability in many instances to have some control over the ability to park on their street to, or who's parking on their street. So I think, I think we always have to consider the context. The reality of what the system is, the reality of what other parts of town are that do not have the same kind of parking pressures. And then think from that, from that perspective.
Thanks, man. Caitlin, anyone else that has requested to speak?
Yes, I just sent the invite to one person. I don't see him in the waiting room yet, but. And then I just, someone sent an email, but I wasn't clear if they wanted to speak or not. So I asked if they wanted to speak and I'm waiting to hear back.
All right. Board members, any questions for for Matt? I think what we should probably do is see if anyone else wants to. Speak if they do. Great. If not, let's close the public hearing and then we can move to deliberations. Christine?
I thank you. I just want to say the reason why we chose some of the streets such as Lindon and San and Sanborn, sorry. Is because in the traffic rules and regs, those streets actually do fall under the downtown business district area. So even though those parts of them have been unregulated thus far, they are actually considered part of the downtown district area in our rules and regulations. they are actually considered part of the downtown district area in our rules and regulations. And Sanborn is very heavily utilized every day. So, I would just be worried that if we only voted on the inner core and didn't worry about the outer core, then the employees are going to go there all day anyway, unregulated at all, and free-for-all on these streets that we're trying to regulate. But that's all I wanted to clarify is that I know those residents feel it's residential, but in our traffic rules, it actually is part of the downtown business district.
Thank you. Chief Clark?
Mark, and just to back up, Lieutenant Amidola said, "Regulation helps us with enforcement." Some of the issues we're having, like Lieutenant Amidola just mentioned, that up part of Sanborn Street, it's not regulated. So, enforcement becomes more difficult for us when it's not regulated. And regulation is about helping enforcement. That doesn't mean we go and ticket every single person or tow anything like that. We're not suggesting that. But it gives us a chance when there is issues in the neighborhood. Strict regulations allow us to deal with the problem better and quicker. And the regulations help us that. And yeah, we started with warnings, we can educate, that's great. But it gives us a chance to then, if there's a constant problem, to give tickets out and help it better. That's why we're asking for some of the streets that aren't regulated to be regulated, to again, help us with enforcement and help us do our job.
Great. Thank you. Matt, did I see your hand?
Yeah, and I just lost my train of thought because I was actually just listening. And that's a very important point, is that without regulation, many problems actually that may arise are actually, the town is then unable to do anything because it's just permitted. So, I think that's something to be said. I'm trying to think about what the previous question was. Sorry, it'll come back to me, and then I'll just raise my hand again.
Caitlin, any resolution on those two people?
Yes, we have Lawrence Muse coming in now.
Great. Hi, Lawrence. You are on mute. There you are. You're in San Francisco, but there you are.
Yes. Hello, Lawrence Muse, 217 Lowell Street. I just had one quick comment. With all these construction projects that are going on that are permitted for one vehicle per house, like the apartment building on Lincoln Street. When, in the wintertime, there's like, if you drive by right now, I got a construction block exit. With these apartment buildings with one parking spot, if you drive by the Lincoln Street building right now, there's about 10 or 15 cars outside because there's no room for them. Where are they going to park in the wintertime? And that's just one building out of three or four they're building.
I can respond, Mark, if that's okay?
Please.
During the daytime, like I said, the regulations fall up and they get ticketed based on the regulations there. During wintertime, that's when the all-night parking ban is enforced, and they'll be ticketed. And if it's impeding snow removal, we don't love to do it, but sometimes we've had to. If the DPW is having an issue plowing safely, we do can, under the current guidelines, ticket and tow the car. But that's just during snowstorms during the winter part of it, when the all-night parking ban is enforced. Other than that, outside of that, in the summertime, depending, again, it comes down to regulation. If the street's regulated, we enforce the regulated part of the parking down there.
I'd like to add to that. You know, that's also when you're talking about parking, particularly in a downtown environment, where if someone rents an apartment and there's one parking space, that is twice they make. And, you know, the way that it works right now is, and it works in, I would say, most communities in the downtown, typically overnight parking is allowed to kind of give that little buffer, that time when that parking is not used very much. And those are the cars that are often most likely to leave during the day, during the working hours, et cetera. I think what you need to kind of think about in that sense is that you have to, that's why you want to have regulation, because there's policies in place, you know, when it comes to parking minimums and maximums, et cetera, that are intended to create the environment you're looking for. And one of the most important things in a downtown is to get, first of all, is to have people. The retail market has changed drastically. Someone earlier commented that you have folks who are going to shop over in Burlington and Linfield. If they're going to Market Street, or if they're going to the Burlington Mall, or if they're going to, you know, strip commercial, that is not downtown. People who are coming to downtown are specifically choosing to go to the businesses that are there, whether it's grabbing a coffee, whether it's going into the CVS, going into, get some dry cleaning or pick up a pizza, things like that. It's a very different context. And that's why you have to have a much more regulated system or a more formalized system, because you don't have greenfields in vast parking lots. You know, there's certain towns that, you know, have tons of parking behind every kind of, in the back of almost every building. That's not Redding. You have a very finite supply of land that can be used for parking. And, you know, so what you want to be doing is making sure that valuable asset you have is being used as efficiently as possible. And that's why a lot of these processes have been developed or these strategies in order to help you do that, particularly given actually that concern you were just saying. If there are some additional cars that are there, you're actually creating an environment where during the day, that's not possible. They just won't be able to park and take up that valuable real estate. Because the roads of valuable real estate, that actually costs a lot of money to maintain.
Thanks.
No, that's it. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. Thanks for joining us.
I remember, I was going to say, I think the one thing that everyone should also be remembering is that when a parking plan is coming together like this, there's going to be revisions over time, and there's going to be changes to surrounding streets. You know, if you're going to see places where issues may arise, never going to be 100% fixed in one, you know, in one change. I was a parking director for a very, very crowded parking area. And a parking plan was caught, the parking plan is being revised at all times. There's different streets that are coming to where I was. It's a council. So, it would be going to a commission to see if you want to change to residential permit. One of the things that would be very helpful, you know, in the long-term, is that, you know, once, is to also then remember that people can come to, you know, to the select board, and they can request that they are added to this. And there can be a process that can be added on, and it has to make sense. So, that's something I think that is always kind of, should always be in the back of everyone's minds. And that's part of just any kind of strategy. It could, you know, zoning isn't forever. You change zoning, and you go through a process. There's requests, there's changes to the streets, there's changes to how people live. You know, there's, one of the main problems that's risen in many places is that parking is becoming really challenging in many of these smaller downtowns because they're more attractive to people, not just the downtown, but the community in which they're in. So, if that becomes one of the draws, you want to make sure that people, many people are able to actually use that. And that's why you've created, that's why we've worked with you, and you've worked really, really a lot to come up with these recommendations so that you're giving many options. You may not, and I will say this, and I say it every time, you are likely not ever going to get that parking space you want right in front of that shop. You certainly do not want an employee parking in that parking space all day long. That's why you're creating all of these different types of regulations. So, I would just say that there's always going to be, you know, there's always going to be some changes that will be required afterwards, but that's part of the process. The goal is to actually create a more efficient system over time, and that requires some changes to start it.
So, I think that's, Caitlin, we have one last person, and then I think we will close the public hearing.
Yes, Michelle Souza.
Michelle Souza. Hi, Michelle.
Hi, how are you?
Good. Thanks for joining us tonight.
Thank you. Thank you for letting me speak. So, my name is Michelle Souza. I live at the very top of Sanborn Street. I'm in a little bit of a unique situation because I am a resident, but I also operate a business out of my house. I guess my first issue is the notification process. You know, my email address, my phone number, it's all on the internet. I did not receive any notification about this. I randomly heard about it from a neighbor down the street yesterday. And if anybody had asked for my feedback, I would have told them that these new parking changes are going to affect my personal business. Because basically, I have a licensed home daycare, so my families drop off and pick up. Now, they're not here for long, but if I have all the parking spots outside my street taken from 7:00 to 5:00, Monday through Friday, even getting a permit from the police station is not going to do anything if there's no parking spots to begin with. So, these changes are going to affect my business, a Redding residents' business. So, I guess notification is the biggest issue that I have. And for that reason, I'm, you know, strongly urging the board to either vote no or to delay this until a later time where it's fair for all the people that are actually going to be affected by this change to actually be given a chance to look at it and look at the options and hear exactly what it's going to do personally to us.
Thank you, Michelle. Any questions for Michelle? Carlo?
Michelle, currently, do you have any, do your parents or caregivers have any issues now? I'm sure there's some spots not always open, or is it okay?
No issue. No issues. Like I said, they're only here for five minutes twice a day, but in those five minutes twice a day, there are parking spots. So, even if you were to say, you know, we could get some kind of sticker where we could pass around or anything like that, it's not going to help the situation if every single parking spot outside my house, along my whole street, is gone. That's not going to help at all. And then I have families, you know, taking small children out of cars and parking two blocks away. That's not, that's going to negatively affect my business. So, to hear about this less than 24 hours ago, just in a random conversation, is honestly, I was shocked, to say the least.
I just have a question, Debbie. I'm just curious, what time are the typical pickup and drop-offs for your daycare?
Anywhere between 7:00 and 9:00, and then 4:00 and 5:00. So, it would be the times that those spots would be taken all day. You know, I guess the issue, the main issue is the notification. Had anybody reached out to me via phone, via mail, knocked on my door, I could have provided this feedback. So, I just, I guess, I'm just confused how a vote can go ahead tonight with no notifications to the actual residents and business owners like myself who are going to be negatively affected by this.
Thanks, Michelle.
May I ask Michelle a quick question?
Please.
So, Michelle, what happens with your large off-street driveway parking area? Do your clients not use that for pickup and drop-off, or is it being used by somebody else?
You mean my?
I'd like to interrupt here. Oh, excuse me. Sorry to interrupt you. I think I want to be careful here in that how residents use their private property is not the topic of discussion here. It's how the streets are being used and the regulations that we're considering enforcing. So, you can feel free to answer. I don't want to stop you. But I want to make sure that how you use your property is not what we're going to base decisions on.
Thank you, Vanessa.
Matt, before continuing, my suggestion, board members, is that we close the public hearing at this point. We take a couple of minute break and just stretch, and then we come back and do the board part of the discussion. Is that acceptable to all? Yep. Okay, so, Carlo, can I ask for a motion to close the public hearing, please? You're on mute.
Sorry. Motion to close the public hearing on downtown parking.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Karen. Any further discussion? No, we'll take a vote, as I'm seeing people in the window. Carlo?
Yes.
Vanessa?
Jeff.
Anne?
Yes.
Karen? You're on mute.
Yes, sorry.
Thank you. And Mark, yes. So, we're 5-0. Thank you to the public for participating. Select board, let's take five minutes just to stretch, and then we'll come back. What I would ask is the members of the public, if you would kind of disengage from the Zoom, and please feel free to join on RCTV or YouTube or Facebook. Thank you, folks. Let's come back at, I'll just say 9:15, please. Thanks. Thinking what probably makes sense from here, I'll check in with the board members, but to go through kind of the four items, Julie, that you have listed kind of on pages twenty-seven to, I guess, to thirty. And see if there are questions or comments that come through from those.
Sounds good. Just let me know when you want me to get started.
One second. Lisa, I don't know if you are, are still monitoring. Can I ask that you leave the Zoom side of this and, and observe on either RCTV or YouTube or Facebook, please? Thank you. Is Vanessa back? Yeah, and Carlo still?
Mark, I'm back. I'm just getting settled.
Okay, great. Carlo, are you back? Let's hang on one more second here. Oh, they are great. You, you jumped the screen on me. Okay, I'm going to call the select board back to order. So folks, we, we've, we've heard from the public, what I was going to suggest is that in Julie's presentation, there are four sections or four sheets, starting at, oh, Julie has got them up on the, on the screen right now. And we talk through those, see what questions or comments that there are kind of one at a time. And then based on that, we can talk about the request for votes for this evening and how we might go through that. But I think these are the, kind of the bigger topics and it'd be best to go through these first. Is that, that all right with all? Yep. Okay.
Mark?
Yeah. Yep. Please.
Um, so if we have sort of broader themed issues that aren't necessarily concerns or questions, should we do those now as opposed to going through the four main items in Julie's presentation?
Sure. Yeah, you have general questions, please. Okay.
Um, so a little bit less questions, more broader picture concerns. So, um, for full disclosure, I live adjacent to some of these areas being discussed, though not any of the streets actually being voted on. I didn't receive any notification that this was coming until the call went out last night at eight fifteen. So I am very concerned that we are potentially voting on parking regulations that will drastically affect these neighborhoods and the surrounding neighborhoods. And we have given, while we have had public sessions where people can participate if they are aware, we have not actively and proactively notified any of these residents that are specifically affected by these changes. We've heard from numerous of these residents tonight. So I, I'll be honest, I am not comfortable on voting on anything that's going to affect these specific streets. I'm comfortable on voting on some of the more general terms. But we saw what happened with the water tower, with Venetian moon, when affected people are not notified. Um, and I, I am frustrated that we are facing this issue again. When we know that people want to be informed when government is making changes that will affect them and on their behalf. So I think it is a mistake to move forward with some of these regulation changes at this time. You know, um, bear with me. I have more items that are specific to some of the feedback that we've gotten, specific to some of the individual motions before us, but I, I that this, this focus, this lack of notification is a huge problem for me personally. So that, that's my general piece. And I'll say more as we progress.
Thanks, Vanessa. Karen?
I'm going to echo Vanessa. That has been, I visited the water tower. I am hearing exactly the same thing from those residents. And this concerns me. I did get calls from residents in these areas. And I think about what would I think if my neighborhood was going to experience dramatic changes? It, how would I feel if I didn't receive a certified letter? Um, and I think about when I want to do something to my property and I need to go get a variance, what do I, or a special permission? What do I need to do? I need to go to town hall. I need to get a list of the butters. I need to send certified letters to all of them. I, I am, I'm very concerned that this keeps coming up again and again. And so I share Vanessa's concerns and I don't think that, I don't think that we've had the right kind of dialogue for these particular neighbors. This particular neighborhood, primarily Linden and Sandborne. Some of the issues that the chief has raised about being able to enforce neighborhood, neighborhoods, parking in neighborhoods to keep it available for neighbors and, and businesses. I'm not comfortable voting on this either. For those specific reasons, when we are going to do something that is going to affect property owners, I think the town needs to be equally responsible for notifying them in, in the strictest possible way, which, which, what, anything that we already, I already have to do. If I want to get a special permission, then I'm not allowed. That's it. That's all I have to say on that particular topic.
Thank you. Carlo?
I just have a question, either for Julie or for Chief Clark or anyone that can answer it. On those two, two particular streets where there's parking allowed on both sides, why can't that continue all of a sudden?
We have the engineering department take a look at it. On Sandborne is wide enough to have parking on both sides. That was not going to change. It was just going to become regulated on both sides. Linden Street, however, if you were to regulate one side and make all the parking on one, it's not wide enough. And now, actually, now that I've been driving down it a lot, looking at this, it probably needs a regulation. The cars are kind of right now self-regulating, you know, one going up a little further than the other, but it's a very narrow street and probably could use already a no parking on one side.
All right, thank you.
Anne, would you like to weigh in?
Sure. So first I want to say thank you to the staff for all of the work and creative thinking that's gone into this proposal. I too have concerns about the notice, particularly given our recent experiences with both the Venetian moon tent and with the water tower. I know that in this case, um, there was a general and constructive notice provided, you know, it was properly noticed as public hearings are required to be, but there was not specific and actual notice provided to affected residents for whom the parking situation would change on the street in front of their homes. I was not able to attend the August meeting. The one select board meeting I have missed, given a longstanding family commitment, but I did watch the video. And I, I know that Vanessa had specifically requested that letters be mailed to residents' homes. I take it that did not happen. I also am sensitive to the fact that, particularly given a conversation the other day with Bob about communications between the board and staff, it's not always clear what the town manager and town staff should do with a, a comment or a recommendation made by one member of the board. So, you know, it's, it's ambiguous when one member of the, of the board indicates a preference for something. So I, I can appreciate that, but the reality is that actual notice was not provided to, to these residents. I'm also sensitive to the fact that with respect to the parking kiosks are the Chamber of Commerce, both the president and the executive director have asked that, that we defer on that. If we were going to be taking that up, I have some, actually some specific questions around privacy. That's not something we've discussed tonight, but was my first question that I had when I, the, at the first meeting when Julie presented this proposal about how residents' privacy considerations would be taken into account with a pay-by-plate kiosk parking situation. So if we are going to be voting on parking kiosks, specifically, I do have some additional questions with respect to privacy considerations. I think that's, I, I've had lots of thoughts. Those are some preliminary ones. Thanks.
Got it. Thanks. So-
Mark, can I ask one more second?
Actually, let me go first so that I kind of have my say here as well first. So, so this is, this, as usual, is a, is a, you know, a difficult scenario, and that's why we're here trying to, you know, work through what's the best way to work it through. I think that a lot of the work that's been done, and there's quite a bit, it makes very good sense. I think that if we are going to address the situation for businesses downtown, we need to find a way to open up parking for shoppers. It's not working. It may be working at the moment in COVID, although just barely because we even found out we had some issues with that as, as we were talking about Venetian moon in the CVS lot. We're not addressing it right now. And if we don't take some action, that problem will continue. Meaning that the, the concerns about shopping downtown and helping the businesses downtown won't get resolved for, for some additional period of time. So I'm, I'm, I'm concerned that we've been talking about this for well over a year. We've looked at these solutions, in fact, you know, much of these solutions for most of that time. In, you know, I, I hear you all loud and clear that, you know, why aren't we able to, to kind of get more, I guess, resident engagement until kind of the night before, the night of? Or, or even worse, the night after. So, you know, how, how do we kind of accommodate that? So I think that if we were not to move ahead on these things tonight, then some very specific things would need to take place in terms of action that we're requesting and then putting us in a position where we're going to need to take a vote and, and move this ahead. I, I think we're not doing anybody a service by kicking the can down the road here. I appreciate it's COVID. It is a really difficult time and I hear loud and clear that this probably isn't the first thing on people's minds. There, there are plenty of other things to be thinking about. You know, that said, how do we put together a structure that's going to work? If we wait until things are normal again, it may never happen. It may be a year away and we're still going to have the problem. So I don't think that we can kind of say, hey, we're, you know, it can't happen during the Zoom era. I, I think that that's not an option. I think it has to be that. I think we can accommodate phone calls and things also. But we need to find, if people aren't comfortable voting on this tonight or are going to vote against it tonight, then we need to be very specific in terms of what we'd be looking for, how it's going to take place and how we can move this ahead. I'm, I'm a little concerned and not, I'm not seeing in my own head how that happens yet. You know, we clearly can talk to residents on, on the, the streets that are involved. You know, as, as we approach winter, the, the emergency vehicle issue becomes more important in, in making sure that that's okay. And if, you know, if things aren't regulated and perhaps they should be, I think we need to take care of that. I'm just, as, as much as I want to make sure we're hearing from everybody, I want to make sure that, that we don't do that forever and find ourselves in a situation where we're not taking care of anybody's needs. So my, my comments there. Sorry, Vanessa, you were next.
Thanks, Mark. So I have three points. The first is that from the beginning of when this parking revamp initiative was started, I had requested a larger investigation or study into the impact in the surrounding areas, both north and south of the outer core. Because my concern with these, the, where the boundaries have been set, and, and they may be set for very reasonable reasons. But all we are doing in some of these cases is pushing the problem out to another neighborhood or to another street that then is going to ask for regulation as well. And then that, that regulation just ends up pushing further and further out and affecting new communities. I think, you know, Matt said something that I think was interesting, which was, so if you have to start somewhere, and yes, there may be some struggles along the way, and then, and then you work those out. And I think that's true. Inevitably, there will be unintended consequences. But right now, we can clearly identify consequences. They may not be intended, but they are inevitable, given how we've structured this right now. And we've heard of some of them tonight from residents. So I don't think it's a matter of needing to hear from everyone, but I think it is. No, we as board members are both, are trying to do two things and, and sometimes they're, they're in opposition to each other. One is what the town needs and one is what residents want. And we represent those residents and we have to look to the best interest of the community. But right now, if we vote and we, and we choose to move this forward without input from the residents, then we are really falling short in our obligations and our responsibilities to these residents that we represent in these areas. And I, and I think that's really important to highlight. And just, you know, you mentioned the idea of kicking the can down the road, Mark. I, I think there's a difference between kicking the can down the road just because you don't want to act on it and doing something and choosing intentional steps forward for how to do this correctly. And I, that would be my goal for tonight. If there's, like I said, there's a couple of the motions that I'm totally fine voting for right now, the leasing program is among them. But I don't think we're ready yet. And I, I appreciate all the time that the staff has put into this, that this board has put into this. But moving forward right now is premature and does it a service to all of those that are going to be affected, including the businesses and the employees, because we haven't talked about how the town is going to maintain sidewalks and has the DPW been consulted on, are there areas where they door snow in some of these areas? We don't know. And that's, and, and I won't even get into the kiosks yet. So I, I think we need to focus on how to move this forward and not voting on these motions tonight. That's my two cents.
Thanks, Vanessa. Anne?
So I'm, I'm hearing whatever, what both Mark and Vanessa are saying. I was hoping to get a little bit of clarification from staff. I understand and I, and I respect all the work that they've done and I understand that staff would like us to vote tonight. So I want, I was hoping to hear a little bit more about that. Why does staff want to vote us to vote tonight, which I certainly can appreciate. They've put in a lot of time, effort, energy and creative thinking to get us to here. So I can, I can understand it would be, it would be great to have finality. But because a lot of these solutions were developed pre-COVID and to a certain extent were in, in response to pre-COVID problems, I, I'm wondering why tonight and what, what are the problems we're seeking to address that are, that are current and ongoing? I think one of the most instructive comments I heard tonight was from our police chief that, you know, providing additional regulation can allow them, in fact, to do more and
our police chief that, you know, providing additional regulation can allow them in fact to do more enforcement. I was also wondering, from staff's perspective, to what extent can we tease apart different recommendations? It seems like in a lot of ways, this is a package, but I want, I don't know, you know, if we, if we address the inner core but not the outer core, are we, are we creating a new problem by not allowing for sufficient employee parking? And I don't want to, you know, do it piecemeal in a way that is actually going to create not actually solve any problem and just create a new one. So I guess the urgent, you know, why now? Why now? What current problems are we seeking to address? And to what extent can we tease apart the different pieces?
Anne, I appreciate the feedback from all the select board. We really do. Part of it is a timing issue. January 1 is when the news, we issued out the new stickers for 2021. I need to order those soon in order to have them more to implement the program. So some of the changes, yes, there is a time limit, and that's what we've been trying to stress is because I need to be able to plan for all of 2021. So if we don't make some of the changes or the changes, it affects, then basically, in some respects, we're locked until next fall when we're looking at 2022.
Okay.
And also the amount, so if, for example, you vote tonight to do it with a lease basis, that changes the amount of employee spaces there, which changes the amount of employee passes I need to order. If we regulate some of the streets, for us, it helps with, and I know you get a lot of comments, the board gets a lot of comments about the lack of enforcement by the police department. Regulating the streets helps us with the enforcement. The perfect example is that San Juan Street. Part of the issue up there is it's unregulated. It affects us, our ability to enforce it. So some of it has to do with increasing the spots. And my concern is why I want to move is as these projects get done and more and more businesses come in, if we don't increase the amount of employee spaces, we're going to run out of the amount of employee passes. And nothing to me is going to kill the downtown more and the businesses down there and Julie and Erin and Jean's ability to draw new businesses in. When people come in and they sell a business and it sounds like, oh, this is great. I want to come into Reading and it's August. And they, and they hear about an employee parking program and they come to the police station and we have no passes left because we've already sold the existing quantity out. It happens now. It's been, and it's getting worse and worse every year. So part of it, what we want to do is we want to have extra spaces, ability to sell them, but also keep a small percentage left. Though when new businesses come in, Julie can sell that new business and sell Reading as a place that they want to be. So the parking program, there's nothing worse when she gets a phone call saying, you told me this, 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 and this, and we can't get that because we don't have it to provide. So some of it's a timing issue. Some of it's regulation to help us with enforcement. And but it's about ordering the right amount that we need. And, and correct me if I'm wrong, and I know Lieutenant Amidola will have no problem telling me if I'm speaking out of turn. If some, I think it's more, there's all different things we're asking you to vote on, and I don't think it has to be the complete package. I think you can review. Am I wrong, Christine?
No, that's why there, that's why there's so many amendments, because they could pick and choose whichever they would like to vote on.
And you can pick and choose. You don't have to vote all of them. It's not, it's not a do this or else. We try to give you a bunch of different varieties.
I knew that we could. I just didn't know if it would kind of blow things up in an unpredictable way if we did some, but not, or if there are some that are just going to create problems elsewhere. If we're not, for example, if we don't do some of the employee parking in the outer core is, but do some of the other changes down closer to the inner core, is that going to create a problem?
I can jump in really. I was just going to say with regards to that specific question about inner core versus outer core, I do think that could be problematic, doing like just the inner core and not the outer core, because if we relocate some of those employee spaces out of the inner core, but don't put them anywhere in the outer core, then we actually have fewer permits for employees that we can give out and fewer locations for them to park in. So in some ways, there are certain things I think can be teased out, like the leasing program you could vote on separately and we would figure out what the regulations would then become for those areas. But I don't think doing the inner core as like a phase one with the outer core as phase two would work.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. The only thing I wanted to say too was, I don't know, I guess maybe it seems rushed for the board, but I've been on the PTF for since 2008, and this is as far as we've come. And I've dealt with the same parking complaints for the past like 10 years on. The employees take up all the parking. There's nowhere to park to go to a business. So I guess it seems rushed for you, but for me, it's a long time in the making to get this far. That's all I wanted to say.
One thing I want to have us to think about also is, and to answer, partially answer your question, Anne, why tonight? So the way I've been viewing this is that, so COVID has caused a break in everything. One of the breaks is in a little bit of the pressure on parking at the moment in terms of is the downtown over full? At the same time, there's a lot of new development that has just come in and we've received a lot of letters recently about that, you know, both pro and con. But the fact of the matter is, is a lot of new development. There is a lot of new retail space that's also part of what's going on with that. So as things, as there is more traffic, and I'm going to assume at some point there will be, whether or not it gets back to the same level or higher, I can't answer. But there will be more traffic. There will be more needs for parking. I think the situation is going to get more difficult. And, you know, this feels like a very productive solution to it. I think, you know, again, we've spoken about it since October or so of last year. And, you know, things are.
I don't think it feels, I don't think it feels rushed from my perspective, to be clear. I don't think it feels rushed. I think there was a notice issue.
Yeah, no, we're hearing that loud and clear. I think, you know, some residents have expressed that. We're talking through it as well. But I think that I'm just, you know, addressing the issue of, you know, timing and what happens and, you know, is there another year to wait as an example? I think that's problematic on my tech. Chief?
And Mark, just to kind of reiterate on your point, this, I think this is long overdue. I know Lieutenant Amidola worked us when she was the traffic and safety officer. She worked on it as a sergeant. She's still working as a lieutenant. She just can't seem to get through this. It's getting worse and it's significantly getting worse. And my concern is if we wait too long to start doing stuff, to start implementing changes, see how those changes are working. I'm not saying this is a cure all. I know at some point, we're going to have to readjust some things, revisit some things based on the need and the needs of the downtown are constantly changing as different businesses come in and out. And I don't want to, my concern is if we wait till a point where all of a sudden, hopefully the world is back to normal soon. I don't know when soon is or what your definition of soon is. But all of a sudden, there's now there's a major issue and it's too late almost to fix it. And now we don't know what to do. And now we are in a full blown rush to make changes. That's why I was hoping to slowly start implementing some things, see what affects the neighborhoods, make some changes, revisit, come back to you. Okay, this isn't working. Let us address resident concerns, come back to you with some actual feedback and see how things are going. That's, that's what my hope is with this whole thing is to kind of do it, some of it before it needs to get, before it's too late is basically. And it's getting to the point where before COVID hit, it was actually getting too late and the complaints were going through the roof. It was becoming a major issue for us and people coming in very upset because they couldn't get the parking they need, which was affecting the downtown businesses. I think more than anything was Julie and Erin and Jean are selling downtown Reading. Again, like I said, and they can't provide what they sold. And that's why I think it affects businesses and our ability to sell writing more than anything. Just.
Mark, if I might. I want to ask Julie a question. Julie was about to do a different portion of the presentation. Do you think that portion would help the board sort of segment ideas into buckets to think about in terms of doing or not doing tonight?
Mark, I have a suggestion.
Let Julie answer that just for one second. Let's come back.
It'll influence, it'll influence.
So I don't want to put the cart before the horse. It could help definitely. And I do have a comment to make about the notification, if and when anyone wants to hear it, but I don't want to interrupt Vanessa.
Yeah, could we hear from Vanessa? Sorry, please.
Thanks. So I have a statement and a proposal for how to move this forward. So one, I really do appreciate all the work that the staff has put into this. I think that, you know, I want the the staff to know this is a, from everything that I've heard from this board, this is a board that wants to address the parking issue. So that Lieutenant Amidola has been working on this for over a decade to me is crazy. Because that is definitely not how long I think it should take to make these kinds of changes. The flip side of that, that statement is that this is too big of an issue to get wrong. And I don't think we're there yet. There are too many implications that haven't been considered. There are too many neighborhoods that haven't been informed. The neighbors have only known about this for a couple of days that are going to be most impacted. I think it is a huge mistake and a disservice to everyone that this is going to affect if we vote on this to move it forward as it stands now. So here's my proposal. I would suggest that, and perhaps this is best to did following Julie's remaining portion of the presentation. I would ask that the staff tease out the areas that the board can act on now without having these ripple effects that we're talking about to the outer core that we can review at our next meeting, which I think is October 6th, Mark.
Correct.
I think tonight, as part of this conversation, the board should create of all the items that we want incorporated in the next round, not for October 6th, but for whenever we review this next. So that it is crystal clear for the staff, because to Anne's point is, it is challenging, I think, for the staff sometimes to know what is an individual request and what is a board request. So if we list everything out for them, they are fully prepared to come back to us with the answers that we're looking for. And as part of that, I would ask the staff to create a detailed outreach plan and a timeline for the stages. And I understand that some of this is time sensitive and there's a pressure because of getting the stickers and implementing it for the, for the police department. So I don't propose we kick this down for another year. But we can't move forward without addressing some of these issues. We haven't talked a lot about electric vehicle charging stations. I know Karen has been beating this drum. No, that should be on the list. There's so, there's other items that, and maybe it was our fault for not having brought those forward or been clearer in the past. But we can do that now.
Thanks.
So that's, that's my suggested proposal for how we move forward.
Yep. I would ask for Carlo, Karen, you guys haven't had a chance to kind of get your second licks. Why don't you do that? And then, you know, I'll recognize you after that. Carlo or Karen, any?
I'll take a stab. I, I agree with pretty much everything that everyone's saying, but what Mark and Chief Clark said in particular about addressing this issue as a former retailer in the town of Reading with signed by law changes, surviving construction of downtown. Parking has always been an issue and parking, parking will always be an issue. No matter what. Parking management is the key. We have to make some steps forward, then take a step back, make two steps forward, take a step back. I understand what happened tonight was not efficient and it wasn't enough notice given. But we're just going to keep on beating the same drum. And we're not going to make everybody happy. What Mark said, with all these new storefronts coming online, the challenge of COVID is one challenge. The challenge of filling even half of these spots is a monumentous challenge and also for the right tenants. Nothing against attorneys or, or accountants, but we don't want, we want retailers, we want food stores, we want coffee shops, we want whatever we want. We want foot traffic. We don't want services, nothing against them. But we want retailers, we want foot traffic. That's what downtown wants. That's what all this housing is for, provide foot traffic. So all the work that's been done, I've been following this as a citizen. I've been involved with it. I've gone to meetings when I was a business owner in town. And now my tenant downstairs is dealing with it. We have a beautiful building across the street from us on Main Street. I'm living in downtown and one big beef that I've had through all this construction is all these vehicles parking right on site. I wish we did a better job on controlling that. And as soon as COVID hit and when the train depot emptied out, they should have been required to park there, not suggested required. I go for a lot of walks, my family does, and these guys are parking right in front of the property that they're working on, just to be close to their vehicle for a cigarette break, whatever the case is, eat their lunch. But most of the properties that they're being worked on is half a block or a block away. And I don't know if any of you read Bob Crowley's email. That was a very good email on his history of dealing with downtown parking for over 30 years. And I agree with a lot of what he said and, and I agree with a lot of you tonight, but maybe not tonight, or maybe you've worn on some pieces of this, but we have to move forward. We have to because as Mark said, before you know it, it's 2021. You know, hopefully things get better, but and what Chief Clark said, we can't, then we're going to rush and then we're going to make too many mistakes. We have to do some phase in approaches and just bite the bullet on some of them and then fix, fix it when it needs to be fixed. But we have to do something, not, not tonight, but we have to do something soon.
Karen.
Thank you.
Thanks, Carol.
Okay. I also understand how much work this has been for the staff and I very much appreciate it. And I also appreciate the complexity of this problem. I would love to be able to vote on part of this, at least part of this, this evening. And also leasing seems to be an easy part to work on. So that we don't have to, if we need to revisit this in pieces, we can make the pieces smaller and make some progress. I'm going to have some. If we discuss kiosks separately, I did have some questions. Again, we had asked for really a, not a return on investment, because it's not, I don't think it was a revenue project, but it was supposed to be, we did ask for our numbers, letting us know what was going to be the total outlay. When would the town be repaid? At the last Select Board meeting, we specifically said, we're very concerned about making significant outlays at this point when we don't know what our larger fiscal situation is during COVID. I for one, if we were going to take up Vanessa's plan and do some follow up, I for one would love to see, I would love to know more about our, our parking enforcement, how that works. And again, getting back to the kiosks, then when the kiosks tell you your two hours are up, that you still have an enforcement officer coming by, how does that all work? Those were some of my questions. I've, I attended the parking meetings in February, did not attend. Oh, well, when I was in the Select Board in August, when we talked about that. And absolutely, I heard in February, I heard the Climate Advisory Committee and other residents ask for this parking strategy to include electric vehicles, chargers, and it's still not part of this plan. So if we could find a way to move forward and partially get this project moving so that the staff could put aside certain parts of it and, and work on others and with a specific timeline to come back, I would be okay with that. And I do understand that a pilot program is going to produce some feedback that we can respond to, and it would be wonderful to have a specific date. Just like the road diet that we would come back and take a look at how things have worked.
Yeah. Anne, did you have a comment? And I see Bob's hand. I know Julie definitely wants to talk about some things and I want to hear her thoughts on, on notice and notification. I think that's important that we hear that.
I just thought I would put out there the questions that I had relating to data privacy around a pay by plate scheme for parking kiosks. That was my kind of, my first question that I had when I, I think it might have been back in February, the first time we were presented with this proposal. And I did get some information from Julie that that Matt had, had provided back in March. You know, under a proposed pay by plate system is currently envisioned to would own and have access to the data, the town, the vendor, both. You know, under a proposed pay by plate system is currently envisioned to would own and have access to the data, the town, the vendor, both. I appreciate that from enforcement and a utilization, understanding utilization perspective, pay by plate would allow for a lot of data collection and analysis. My concern from a privacy perspective is that it would allow for a lot of data collection.
Analysis.
An analysis. So I understand from Matt that it's a, this was what he had provided to Julie in response to my questions. A little unclear about how the data is provided. Typically, the full plate is provided as part of the system. The key issue here is to ensure data use policies are clear and limit the ability of law enforcement to use the data. The same with data retention policies should also be put in place to limit ability to track behavior. Matt talked a little bit about analogizing this to an EZ Pass and how there are strict data usage policies there. But I haven't heard anything specific as to how, and Matt, you might have more information. I, I don't know that I would be able to vote in the affirmative on, on any pay by plate scheme unless there were assurances of, of how data was going to be used and retained. Because I do have concerns about collecting data on residents' whereabouts, locations and movements, so.
Thanks, Anne. Bob?
I don't know if Matt wanted to respond.
Um, yeah, I think that you do have to have policies in place. And there's good examples out there about how you do retain data or how it's being used. And if that's formalized, that's a really strong thing to do so that you can assuage fears about that. I do think that there are some strong advantages to pay by plate, purely from logistical kind of side. It's less maintenance in terms of for the town itself, so you're not constantly adding signage for paid, for which space someone's in, all those kinds of things. I also think, you know, I think you can look to, you know, things like Mast dot, et cetera, for those kinds of policies that you would adopt. I think in order for you to vote tonight on whether or not you want kiosks, you can decide whether or not that's pay by plate or pay by space later. What you're really voting on is whether or not you want to have kiosks. Many communities switch from plates, from pay by plate to pay by space. Actually, I don't know any that have done that, I've known that many who've gone from space to plate. I think it's an advantage. I understand that the safe, the, the privacy concerns, et cetera. I also think there's the reality too, is that almost anyone who's going to be parking there, first it's not, it's, it's people everywhere. The vast majority of communities now are doing this by plate because it is a more efficient way to do it. Anybody who has a concern of that, I would be surprised then, they probably aren't going to be driving on the Mass Pike or the Tobin Bridge. It's, it's a technology that is really effective. You're already looking, most communities are already, in some ways, when it comes to, if you think of parking citations, for instance, like I know many communities, if you have five, you know, or more, whatever your number is of unpaid parking tickets, that's, that's the ability to tow. So, you know, it's, it just has to do with how you want to use any information, what, what level of information you want to get. But that's at the discretion of, of the community. If you, if you want to pass, you know, some kind of, you know, I would say, some kind of a requirement that if pay by plate is being used for this, that none of that information may be used for anything other than parking. I think that's a wise thing to do. And then I would look for many of the templates. I'm not a lawyer, so I'm not, I can't get into all the legalese, but I know that there are so many examples of this happening. And it's, it's a valid concern, you know, that's why communities are not allowing facial recognition at, you know, different stores. You know, I mean, Target's doing it every time you go in. So it's, I think you just have to, you have to be very aware of how that data is being used. I think you have to be very public about it. You have to be forthright about where you're not using it so that the public knows, so that it can't be used in a nefarious way. Not that I would think anyone would use it that way, but that's the fear.
Thanks.
Mark, if I can ask Jean and Julie a question, I've, I've never quite faced this situation before. The board has closed a public hearing. So my best understanding is they can't continue this discussion and vote next meeting without re-advertising a public hearing. Is that correct?
Yeah, probably.
Yeah, so, so the board couldn't take votes tonight, you're still in the hearing. It's, it was posted for today. But I don't believe that you can continue this hearing. Normally, when hearings are continued, from my experience, it's before they're closed. There's an obvious reason why, there's some reason why the hearing can't finish it tonight. So you don't close it, you continue it, but the board's already closed it. So I believe we would have to re-advertise, which I'm pretty sure knocks October 6th out, because we, I think we need a two week notification. So I just wanted to make sure the board was aware of that sort of technicality. And, you know, unless Jean or Julie is sure that we can take it up in two weeks, I would say we can't. You guys have had more experience with hearings.
So the only thing is that, you know, which I don't think is what is desired here, is if there were no new information and no more public input, then potentially they could talk about it again, but I don't think that's what's intended.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I, I think that, you know, our solution to that probably would be to have to have a separate meeting, an additional separate meeting, potentially on the 13th of October, if that's what we saw, you know, if everyone desired that. But before, before we go there, so Julie, I wanted to get your input.
Oh, yeah, so I just want to just quickly circle back to the notification issue. And I hear what you're saying. We, we missed the market seams on that and I'm not, my, my comment isn't meant to change any minds or persuade anyone of anything different. I did want to shed some light into why we did what we did this time around. And partially, we, you know, the, the last meeting, we heard from residents sort of outside of what we would consider even like the greater downtown area who are interested, who didn't want to be left out of any notification that we did. So that's why we looked to put like a physical paper mailing in something that we thought, you know, every resident who pays a water bill would get. And it would be something that they wouldn't just rip up as like junk mail, because, you know, they need to open their water bill. So we wanted to make it as visible as we could to as large of a geography as we could. That, that definitely is a general way of notifying people. And then to, for a more targeted outreach, we looked to Code Red, because we understand that a lot, there are a lot of subscribers and that, you know, I, I get it myself and it's nice that comes through on a text. And it's not just another thing coming in the mail. So we wanted to kind of take a multi-pronged approach to how we reached out regarding this, this issue. And then I also followed up with emails to a very large contact list that I have. So I hear what you're saying, that we missed the mark a little bit, but there was some logic and thought behind the process that we utilized.
Julie, when were, when was the code red? Was it one or was it multiple?
There were two. There was one that went out, I don't remember the exact date, it might have been, it was prior to my September Zoom info session. So it was probably the week of, like the last week of August or two weeks, potentially the second.
August 20th.
August 20th.
5:30 at night.
And would that have gone to essentially all the folks that are in the outer core? As well as the inner core?
Yeah, it went to a, actually a boundary, I can send you the, the exact boundary, but it was a quite, quite wide, very inclusive, you know, way more than we typically would consider the downtown.
Got it, so, so just, we, we've always, we, all of us here have always struggled with what's the best way to reach out to the community and get input. And it continues to be a struggle in terms of how to do it. You know, no one or two or three sources are sufficient. It takes kind of everything. It's like an all of the above, and even with that, we're going to miss some people as well. And again, I, you know, I'm hearing enough people that are very concerned that, that don't feel they received any notification and we need to pay attention to that. But, you know, Julie, I appreciate your, your, your sharing. I mean, I think there, there was a very strong attempt at outreach. And I think it's an and, it's not an or, it's an and, we need to do more somehow. Sorry, so Vanessa, I saw your hand.
Thanks. So Mark, sort of back to my original proposal of how we move this forward, because it's 10 o'clock and we still have numerous other items that we're supposed to get to tonight. So again, I suggest that we ask the staff to tease out the areas that the board can review at whenever our next meeting is. And maybe it is a special meeting in order to allow for the hearing to be posted again, because now we are changing potentially some of these motions and highlight those that we can move forward with them. And then we spend the rest of, you know, maybe it's the next 15 minutes and just crank out a list, not discuss the pros and cons of each of these things, but just say, these are the things that we want information on from the staff so that they can come back to us and then we can discuss it moving forward. And then a timeline and a plan for outreach for the next series of meetings. And if this is such a hot topic issue, maybe we schedule a separate meeting, sort of a standalone hearing. And maybe that's a better approach, because otherwise we're just going to keep going in circles. And my last comment is regarding kiosks. It's not clear to me if we're going to be voting on those tonight or not. I am strongly against kiosks in town. I think they are incredibly problematic. I think they're going to discourage people from parking to run quick errands and they're going to go elsewhere. You know, I think before we move to the idea of kiosks, we should implement these other ideas that have been discussed. Moving the employees out, changing the two hour parking and, and see what happens there, because the kiosks are $60,000 just to get them installed at a minimum. We haven't seen a business plan for what the maintenance is going to cost. I saw something about staff needs, so I don't, I'm unclear on if that's a new staff member or a part-time staff member that's going to be required. And the funding alone for this for me is, is a hard no. So I, I am vehemently opposed to kiosk parking anywhere in the downtown area at this time.
I can answer some of that, I can't change your mind on a lot of it, but kiosks are very inexpensive compared to any numbers you've mentioned. Matt can go into detail, Julie can go into detail. The reason we didn't do a significant financial analysis is because it really is not a big factor. Your, your policies are a much more, much bigger factor than the cost. So Matt, why don't you just sort of review, you know, ballpark is 10 to 15,000.
Yeah, I mean, so kiosks, the reason you go with kiosks as opposed to meters, for instance, is they are far more affordable and they actually provide far, often far more information, you know. For instance, if you're, if you decided to eventually, at 1.2 meters, every single meter has a cost, every single meter has a maintenance issue, every single meter has actually a collection need. The reason you go with kiosks is that, first of all, they provide a lot of, you know, valuable information about, you know, your current utilization of that lot. They are, it's one to two per lot. There's also other ways, the other reason why it's good is it's very easy for enforcement. So what happens with, just for instance, with minimal staff change, if you already have enforcement and you have officers, what you, you do literally is you go to the lot, you can print out every plate that is currently parked there and you can walk or space, if that's how you went, the number, and you know exactly who's paid and who hasn't. It's actually very quick. Whereas compared to right now, if you're talking about enforcement by not having any kind of kiosks in particularly the CBS lot, which is very highly used, particularly in the middle of the day, you're now asking, you have to then technically either, now by law, you can, you can digitally chalk, you can't actually chalk a tire to see if they've moved. It becomes a much more, over time, efficient way of actually managing that parking, just to, I mean, just to put it simply. It also makes it very easy to provide warnings and citations, because you know exactly who, how long someone's been there and whether or not they paid. The cost is actually very small. I know that when you actually think of the revenue that will be generated from that, it's actually not going to be, you'd probably pay for it within the first year. If you didn't, and very few things that municipalities do pay themselves within a year, quite frankly, if they ever pay off themselves. So I, I think that's a really, it's a bit of a tricky thing for people to understand in that sense, because it is an upfront cost. But that 15,000 per the, per, and that's a high end for kiosks, that includes installation. That includes getting that concrete pad that has to be placed there. That, that if it's electric, that includes getting the, as long as there's an electric source nearby, which you would check, that includes that. Or you can go with solar, for instance. So I think that from a parking perspective, kiosks to me are one of the most cost-effective ways to do parking management. They just really simplify things. And then quite frankly, what they do is that if people want, you know, what you do is you give that month or so for people to get used to it. Once they've used it, they know how to use it. But also, they also are great with integrating a parking application, whether, and what you.
Matt, excuse me, I just want to interrupt for a moment. Mark, again, I'm just going to reiterate, it is 10 o'clock, we still need to discuss the town manager goals and I'm not even clear off on if we're voting on kiosks. But Matt, I really do appreciate the information that you're providing. But we as the board have not been presented with a business plan that incorporates all of these wonderful details that will allow us to make a more informed decision. So Mark, you know, I'm going to ask that, you know, can we discuss what we're going to do with the rest of this? There's almost two dozen motions that we're supposed to be voting on tonight. Are we doing that? Are we, you know, how are we moving this forward?
So I think what you're suggesting and what I think we can do here is I'm going to stop discussion completely. And I'm going to reopen it on one topic, and that is, what questions does the board have that it would like to see resolved by, I'm going to pick a date of October 13th, that would allow us to vote on some or all of these items. I'm looking at the calendar, the timeline, and it looks like as it relates to, and Chief helped me here, for the employee permits as an example, it's eight weeks minimum, 12 weeks preferred, regulatory signs, six weeks minimum, eight weeks preferred, so that something accomplished in October could still achieve these timelines.
You're getting tight, Mark, to be honest. And again, I, I don't want to put any pressure on you, I, I understand it's been a long night, there's a lot to go over. And believe me, I appreciate that, but it just means that we might not be able to enforce certain things, starting on January 2nd, 3rd and 4th. I could be looking in the middle of January with no enforcement because stuff has expired. Or we might need to become, come to you with amendments, asking for extensions on things as well as results. So that's kind of like, so we are just getting close with that.
Got it, but so, but if, if, if we're doing something soon, if the board can come up with a list of what it needs and we can meet again in that soon timeframe to come as close as we can to those timelines, to get as close to a January implementation as possible. And if we're able to answer most of the questions, perhaps we can vote on most of the items. If we're only able to answer some of the questions, maybe it's only some of the items. But the board doesn't seem ready to move ahead right now. And instead of, I, I don't think our time is best spent talking about kiosks and costs right now, but rather, what are the things that we're looking for? So I think that's where we should head right now. And so I guess the, what I'm suggesting is that we would not vote on these items tonight unless something like, you know, what I've heard so far from people is that the issue of leased spaces seems non-controversial. Am I, am I hearing that from virtually everybody?
I agree to that statement. Yes.
I think the issue Julie raised was that, that has a ripple effect, because the leased spaces are what are currently being used by employees. So for removing that as employee parking and converting it to two hour parking, then those employees, however many hundreds some odd leased spaces exist, those people now no longer have places to park. Unless they move into areas that are unregulated, which isn't.
Yeah, do those become two hour or are they two hour or employee?
I can, I can screen share the proposal and I actually think that the leasing program can stand on its own. I don't think it will create a drastic ripple effect and I can explain why, but I'll share my screen really first.
But, and then Carlo has had a comment next.
Sorry, this is the wrong slide. So I can go back to the map as well if we need it, but there are 58 leased spaces. Forty-one of those spaces are on High Street and those would turn into public two hour or all day with employee permit under our proposal right now. So those, a lot of those 41 spaces are being used by businesses or are leased by businesses right now. And they, they would just be lumped back into the employee permit program, so they could be utilized by businesses again in future. And then there are four spaces on Brandy Court and those are the four that would become public two hour. And then there are 13 in the Harden Yard Lot and that, there's a variety of ideas for the different spaces in that lot. And I have it on a map if it's easier, but there are some areas that, that seem warranted for public two hour or all day with employee permit. And then the spaces in the center would be public two hour. And then the spaces in the center would be public two hour and then there would be spaces that would be police business only.
Okay, Carlo.
Thanks, Mark. I was definitely just asking to see these slides, so.
Perfect. Would it help you, you staff, if we were to vote on that tonight?
It would be, it'd be great.
Mark, yes, that would, that would have an impact, at least something we can move on and make some changes to. That that would actually be helpful.
Okay, so let me suggest this then. Why don't we focus on two things? One is to review the specifics on these spaces to make sure we're comfortable with that, answer any questions as one. Then item two is to look at the remaining items, if you will. Come up with a list tonight during this meeting of questions that we have that we'd like to see resolved. And then come up with a date at which we would like to have another meeting and I guess public hearing and meeting. And I think the idea of dedicated is exactly right. And let's make sure that we're we're focused on it and see what information we're able to gather in that timeframe and then vote on it. It's all right. Okay, so.
Mark, Mark, can I just ask a question of probably police before you do that?
Sure.
I just want to make sure we're, we're knowing what page we're on. If you folks can look at the motions, I actually, why don't I share a screen just to make it simple? So Julie, I'm going to take yours away. Can people read that? Does it need to be a little larger?
A little bigger.
Okay. Yep.
I'm going to read a list of the motions that I think are relevant to leasing and I just need someone to confirm it. Twenty twenty dash four, twenty twenty dash five, twenty twenty dash six.
And there's one more Bob, it's on the second page, it's about Harden Yard.
There it is, twenty twenty dash twenty two. Does that sound like a complete set?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we were on the right page here. Thanks.
Okay, so board members, why don't we address leased spaces specifically? And then we'll move from there to the specific discussion of what we would be looking for in order to make further decisions. So Julie, can you put up the slide on leased spaces, please? Okay, so we're talking about the amendments four, five, six, seven and twenty two, referring to High Street, Brandy Court and Harden Yard. Just a quick question, there are five, five amendments and three areas, just to make sure we understand what and why.
I I didn't think seven was included.
There are four amendments, I'm sorry.
Four, five, six and twenty two.
Yes.
Okay, so the same question, there are three areas and four amendments.
Because one is for the program in general.
Great, thank you. And just to, just to kind of reiterate for myself, we talked about the biggest issue going on here is that they're not fully utilized. That sometimes they're used, sometimes they're not, and to open it up to an opportunity for to our public or for employee parking permits. We feel allows for much better utilization of those spaces and much more regular utilization of those spaces.
Couldn't have said it better myself.
Thank you. Any questions from board members?
Mark, I'm all set through, I'm ready to vote when everyone else is ready.
I'm ready.
Karen, Vanessa?
I'm ready.
Okay, let's shift back. Bob, I don't have those motions. If you could put those back up, please.
Certainly. And I'm, I'm going to suggest that you renumber twenty two to seven, just because that's how the PTTF or the manual goes. So I will do that here.
Yep, and just do it in red if you don't mind.
I was just going to say, let me just turn on track changes just in case. And for laughs, I'll make this one twenty two. So the motion could be four, five, six and seven.
Carlo, can I just get to make that motion, please?
Before we jump to that, for anyone who's following along at home, this is starting on page thirty nine of our packet. That goes into the exact details of the areas and just a little bit more information than is provided here in the summary.
Carly, you are, oh, there you go.
Sorry, we're doing each individual motion, correct, or altogether?
I think we could put them together. You know what, let's not, let's just do it, let's be clear.
Okay.
And let's go each one.
Okay. Move that the board approved traffic and parking regulations amendment number twenty twenty dash four as presented slash amended leasing program.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks Karen, discussion. Let's take a vote. Carlo?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Vanessa? Karen?
Yes.
Mark, yes. Next one?
Move that the board approved traffic and parking regulations amendment number twenty twenty dash five as presented slash amended leased space, leased spaces, High Street.
Is there a second? Thanks Karen, discussion, not appearing. Carlo?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Vanessa?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
And Mark, yes. Thank you. Next motion?
Move that the board approved traffic and parking regulations amendment number twenty twenty dash six as presented slash amended leased spaces, Brandy Court.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks Karen, discussion. Let's take a vote. Carlo?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Vanessa?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Mark, yes. And the last one, please?
Move that the board approved traffic and, oh, sorry, move that the board approved traffic and parking regulations amendment number twenty twenty dash seven as presented, presented slash amended leased spaces Harden Yard.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks Karen, discussion. Let's take a vote. Carlo?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Vanessa?
Yeah.
Karen?
Yes.
And Mark, yes. Thank you. We went through those. Okay, great. Now, let's talk about what we would be looking for specifically for a meeting to take place. Let's use a placeholder of October thirteenth. What issues would we like to have addressed specifically, I guess, by that time? I would be open to hearing from individual members and their thoughts and we can kind of make sure we're in agreement.
Sure, I'll go first.
Great.
I'm, I'm still looking, so I understand Julie's comment earlier, they haven't really, folks, y'all haven't did a deep, haven't done a deep dive into the costs related to the kiosks. But I am seeing staff, software, installation, maintenance. And if this is commonly done by not lots of communities, let's reuse some data out there. So we understand what the initial investment is, what the annual investment is, the staff that's needed to use them. And, um, you know, any service plans and, and a projected income stream, please. And I'm not going to say we need this by two weeks from tonight. But I, I, I'm asking for information on where electric chargers, public electric vehicle charges would fit into our parking plan. And that's pretty much the two items. Thank you.
Vanessa?
I already talked a lot, I was going to let everybody else go first and then just fill in the blank.
Anna, Carlo, you want to go next? Carlo, I see you're, you're unmuted, but you look frozen. Oh, there you go, you're back.
Sorry, I was just looking at some of my slides. I don't have any specific questions. I know there's a lot of work that has been done and some more work needed to be done. I, I just, I'm ready to move forward in the, in the most efficient way, so I'll kick it up to Anne.
Can I, can I quick, I forgot one, I'm sorry. I I asked for information about our enforcement staff. How does parking enforcement work in Redding? Can, like a one slide, what staff do we have? When are they working? How often do they work? I'd love some visibility into that. Thank you. Sorry, all done.
Thanks Karen. Yeah?
Matt spoke to this a little bit already, but I think it would be helpful to have in writing how we can safeguard user data. What kind of data retention and usage policy can we have? And and perhaps significantly, how would we formulate a motion to protect said data? From a privacy perspective. And then my, my outstanding questions and concerns are really about notice. And I don't know that you laid that out as one of the things we are going to do, but I thought it would be, I would think for the staff, it would be helpful to hear from the board about what our actual expectations are with respect to notice. And I would, I would like to see a letter be sent, either mailed or stuck to the door of, of residents on unaffected streets. And I, 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 I know Vanessa has some thinking around broader than the inner and the outer core, but I, I'm thinking that I'm, for me, I'd be satisfied with people whose streets are, are within the plan for changes. If you're, if you're, if parking is changing on your street, you should receive an actual notice either in the mail or stuck to your door.
Anne, on that, would a notice say, you know, charge, to be simple, parking's changing on your street, please visit the website for more information. And there's a meeting on X date. Is that sufficient?
Making clear that the, the parking changes are affecting their street. I think as, and if you're pointing to them to the right direction, in the right direction or with a phone number, that would be, I mean, the more specific, the better. But I understand that could be onerous if there are different letters that have to go to different streets. It does need to, I do want it to indicate that there are changes impacting their street, not simply downtown parking. Because folks in the outer core may not consider themselves to be downtown, even if they're, you know, technically designated in the district. They may not, you, they may, you hear downtown and you may think Haven Street and Main Street.
Okay, thank you.
To Anne's point, I was paying very much attention to the town spraying notices and I was always looking for my street to know where they were coming. So I think that's a, that's a really good point.
Great. Let me add a couple of comments and then I'll let, I'll let you close on it, Vanessa. So Bob, your point on having some kind of a specific session where the letters are pointing people, I think is very important. I think that it does need to be by Zoom, but I think we need to make sure that people know they can join by telephone as an option. So that if they don't do Zoom or they don't have internet access or they're not comfortable or just don't want to, they can join by phone. I think outer core, I agree. It suffices at this point, I understand that. On the point of enforcement. Could you folks also talk about if we implement these changes, what enforcement changes do you plan or expect to do? And I want to take kind of Matt's point also, which is that once there are new regulations, how will we work with those regulations? Who will do it? And I think Carla brought up the issue of hours and things like that. How, how is it going to be implemented? So that in fact, once we've made these changes, we can offer friendly suggestions early on about this isn't okay, you need to park elsewhere. And then eventually enforcement so that people do not park there when they're not supposed to. Third, back to the kiosk discussion and in thinking about chargers and things. I think the, one of the important things is that if we are going to dig anything up for, let's say, kiosks. We should be talking to RMLD and figuring out how to get power to that location and have some charging station opportunities set up. There's no reason to dig it up once for kiosks and another time for charging stations should happen one time. It'd be much more efficient to do it that way. And I think it's, it's an important idea that we want to get done. We talked about it at our last meeting in terms of chargers as a priority. The, these are the spots, these are great spots to get started.
Mark, we, we can do that, but we were thinking solar.
Solar in terms of?
The kiosks powered by solar.
Well, the presentation still says that both options are being looked at, so, but your point is taking solar as an option.
Yep. And does the, the solar ones allow for the data issues, the data transmission? Do they have enough power to do that as well?
Yeah, I don't think there's any difference.
Okay.
What you, what the one thing you need, which we're not a hundred percent sure, we have to study is internet access in the two locations. We think it's fine, but we've got to look.
Yeah, they're probably five G. Okay. So, so not related to digging up, although if we're doing any digging up, we definitely want to do it then. But I would like to be, if we're talking about changing these lots, I'd like to talk about charging stations. And I think RMLD would be a willing partner in the discussion. I might, I think that the charger itself may not cost us anything. I think armed with those issues, I'm prepared to, to vote on these topics. Vanessa?
Thanks, Mark. So I agree with, with essentially everything everyone listed for the employee permit program. I noticed that the first month of implementation of the plan for, for these, for any significant changes that we make is limiting it to five passes per business. However, that leaves certain types of businesses, I'm thinking hair salons and dentists and any others who employ large quantities of employees, maybe not all at the same time. It leaves them in a very challenging position of not having any parking available for their employees in any of these areas for the first month. And if that implementation is going to be in January, that's going to be a safety problem for their employees. So I, I'd like to know what is going to be done to address those businesses. For kiosks, while I have already said that I oppose them, I would like to have more information on maintenance costs. What the lifespan of the equipment is, because if they need to be replaced at a certain timeframe, that will need to be incorporated into the budget. Because at that point, it becomes an operating cost. I'm curious to know what our peer communities are doing because I want to be clear, we are not Andor and we are not Winchester. We do not have the same dynamic downtown that some of these other communities have. And if we're trying to attract people, I am very worried if we are comparing ourselves to cities, which we are not. Bob mentioned the internet access, is that going to be a cost? There was also mention of additional parts of the program that could be there, including validation, monthly or other tiered passes. Is there going to be an extra cost from the third party provider for these services? Are they add on features that we have to pay for as a town to maintain them? There was mention of employee administration in order to manage the program. Is that anticipated to be done with existing staff? And if so, what are they being pulled away from in order to manage this program? Or is this going to be an add on from a cost perspective? Because in my mind, that again goes into the operating cost, we've now added an employee. So it's not just the initial installation from a cost perspective. All right. The Anne already touched on the notification calendar. I want to know what the outreach plan is and what that's going to look like. Because, you know, we've fallen short on this for other topics and I want to make sure we get this one right. The one area that I think needs to happen is looking into how it's going to affect surrounding areas. There are, some of the other neighbors mentioned the fact that Linden and Sanborn are parallel or perpendicular to other streets that aren't touched. Because technically, those streets don't count as downtown. But they're going to be affected when all of these parking implementations go into effect. When the parking depot fee was changed to a hundred and fifty dollars, I said there's going to be ripple effects in the surrounding communities. And sure enough, there were. I heard from my neighbors, because I was in that area, of getting blocked in in the winter. And they couldn't get out of their driveways because people who used to park there and the depot didn't want to park anymore. So we, we need to be sensitive to what this is going to do. So we, we need to be sensitive to what this is going to do to other neighborhoods. Uh, I don't think that's something we can brush aside because we'll be dealing with it uh six months after we implement the change. For the streets where parking is being proposed to be banned on one side. Um, the topic of tree lawns came up from one of our residents. So is the town going to enforce not parking on tree lawns? Is because it's going to present um snow removal issues, um aesthetic issues and liability issues for the town if we allow people to either gravel over or park on tree lawn. So what's the plan there? So for the streets that we're converting to uh employee parking, does the town become responsible and liable for snow removal um and lighting to make those areas safe? Um, I mentioned this earlier, has the DPW been consulted? And are we removing any snow storage spaces on some of these narrow streets by putting parking in those areas? Um, and the last one, electric charging stations, um I echo everything Mark and Karen said. That's it.
Vanessa, two, two quick uh comments if I could. One, um, I think that as it relates to the businesses that could use more than five passes. I think you actually have collected the data about how many passes people would, would want. So maybe that we can just utilize some of that to, to be very helpful and speed that up. Um, and the second issue that I forgot completely on kiosks, and thanks for bringing up kind of the best practices on that Vanessa. Um, a number of people have talked about the issue of thirty minutes being too short. And again, thinking about best practices, what would happen if we used one hour as the uh the free period and anything after that requires validation? What does that do to how the structure works? Who's, who's, who's done that? Who knows what will happen? How do we figure that out? Because I think that might address a number of the issues that were brought up by people. It won't, won't affect the karate studio, I get it, but maybe not the doctor's office, but a lot of the others, I think it definitely would. Any other, you know, last shots that folks want to add?
Mark, can I chime in for two seconds?
Yes, please.
Alright, um just to answer one question or one of the issues, um Vanessa, you might not have been the only one that brought it up. But um as far as the employee parking with the free five, we want to put some type of limitation on it so that a business doesn't come in and grab fifteen that doesn't need it. Um, potentially maybe hand it out to a family member that's commuting into Boston or something. My administrative staff that hands out them always has the flexibility. We have the data that the, that Julie, Erin and Jean have worked on hard. And I've always given them the flexibility to make a decision based on what the business needs. But we had to come up with some number, just so they weren't all getting snagged up the first month either. So my staff will have the flexibility, again, based on data that has been provided to us by town staff and this business needs. And I've always kind of given them that flexibility. So it's, it's just, it's one way to regulate it, but in the same token, it, it's, we will be flexible. It's not like a hard line rule. If that helps answer some of the um concerns with that.
It does. That's very helpful. Thank you. Um, and it's nice to know the staff has that flexibility. I think um one of the things I'd heard from businesses is if, you know, I, I, I don't remember who said it earlier. I, I think it was Mark, that if a business comes in mid-year, um, there's no more passes available. So what happens when a business like D'Amici goes out of business? Um, you know, how do we, how, obviously passes don't get returned. Um, so how do we handle that inventory to allow businesses to secure passes? Um, because in the, in the past, it's just been a hard no. There's a set number and once those are gone for the year, that's it.
And that's why we um looked at limiting the amount of passes handed out. Before like a business came in, they could grab twenty-five, another business grabbed thirty, they might not actually need it. And the fact that they're hanging tags, we've also asked the businesses to, if you have two employees, one works an eight-hour day, one day a week and another one, can they come into the business, grab the pass and put it on the car just for that day? Um, and that way we have an extra supply left over, a few leftovers. When a new business comes in, perfect example, the Amici's, a new business does come in, we can then provide them with the passes, could we have extra ones? That's why we're looking to add um more employee spaces to allow us to have more passes to do that. But we can also kind of um regulate that. And also, when the uh businesses in the past, when they let an employee go, weren't collecting the passes back. So we've actually informed businesses, just like if you take a key to the building back or an email password to get in. When you take that back, have the pass as part of the, what you take back as, as um issued by the business. So we've been trying to educate the businesses on that as well.
That's great. That's wonderful. Um, maybe they're, they're required to put down a deposit.
There you go. Um, board members, anything else? Have we covered what we want to have covered? Karen?
So are we sending letters to the same businesses who are very concerned about the parking that we temporarily lost this summer? Are they really okay with this idea of kiosks? They have not thought about their elderly patients and their elderly pets having a truck over to a kiosk and then truck back and get into, get in and get out. I mean.
Yeah, so uh, uh, one thing I wanted to, to bring up, it doesn't directly answer that, but it's an important piece of it um that I learned also, and that is, and then maybe we'll, we'll let Matt kind of um talk to this for a second also. The kiosk we're talking about would accept, you can talk to it by smartphone. You can pay the credit card, you can put in cash, maybe even coins, but I'll let someone else answer it on coins. But it's got enough flexibility to accept different payment types without requiring you to you know, get a parking app to get things done.
Totally saw that. The issue that, the concern that came up when we lost some of those handicap spots and those parking spots was I have to shuffle over to that kiosk after, it's extra walking for people that can't do that walking.
And let me just put it to Matt also. My understanding is that if you have a handicap access sticker in your car, you don't need to pay it meters. Is that correct?
You know, there's, if you have a handicap placard, you can park anywhere without any restriction in paying. That doesn't matter what community you're in.
There you go.
I also want to say that's the advantage. One of the concerns that people say that, that's a pain about either um like pay and display, for instance, like original kiosks had like pay and display where you'd have to go to the kiosk, get a printout, then go back to your car. That's one of the advantages of either pay by space or by pay by plate. You go to the kiosk once and that's the only time you have to go. Um, the other advantage of, for instance, this is one of the reasons why pay by plate's great with parking apps. Because essentially, once you have that app, your, your, your license plate is, you put it in your, kind of like your wallet. So that it, when you pay your parking the first time and then you use it, it already, it will hold that in it. So whenever you pay the next time, you don't have to go through that process of identifying the space or remembering your plate. It's already stored in there.
Cool.
And my point is just the notification again, notifying in writing, written, this affects you, that's why we're sending you this letter.
Yep. And if you have comments, send them to us and or come to the meeting.
If it would be helpful, I'm sure someone on board would be happy to review the letter. To, to ensure that our um high demands are represented. I said I would be happy to do that.
I think that's a good idea. Um, staff and board members, given this list that we've just generated for you. Do you think it's feasible to have a public hearing on the thirteenth of October? Which would give us more than two weeks' notice and I'm just wondering if that gives you the time to accomplish what we've asked.
I, I would say not to accomplish the rest of the tasks that were presented to you tonight and that you've listed here. It's a question of whether the board wants to try to take another small bite and whether that's even practical. And we won't, we won't know that till staff really meets tomorrow to discuss. So, you know, why don't I get you some feedback after tomorrow's meeting as to next steps? That, that still gives us plenty of time to hold a meeting in October if you want to.
Does that work for all? Great, great. That's perfect. So you're, you're timing with a meeting tomorrow. Sorry that it's not going to be for the exact reason you'd hoped, but at least it's perfectly utilized. I think we close this topic. Good. Great. Thanks, folks. Let's move on. We have a couple more things we have to do. Uh, we have to appoint members. We have to do warrant. Let's get going. Let's go to VAS.
Can we take a two-minute break? I realize it's late, but it would be nice to stand up.
It's ten forty-three. Can we come back in, in, in just a couple of minutes? So ten forty-five. Thanks. Thanks Anne, and Karen.
So Mark. By contract, do we need to tackle the goals tonight too, or can?
Yeah, talk about it until we're.
Oh, okay.
Session, sorry.
Sorry, I thought it was a process question.
Do we get to vote on Halloween?
Take a vote on Halloween or take a vote about Halloween?
Can we vote?
Zoom background, how's that? Because it's nighttime. Oh, there's a beach. There we go. It's late.
There you go.
I feel better already. Breeze blowing. That's awesome.
It looks like your hair is blowing in the breeze.
I'm gonna go put a fan on. Oh yeah, that'd be great, huh?
Can I be where you are?
Yeah.
But we do that, we are, we are back in session. Um, we are on the next item of the agenda, which is to vote to appoint members to the Board of Health and ZBA. So um VAS members, um can you talk to us about both of those uh positions and recommendations, please?
Or Carla, do you want to start?
Uh, sure, yeah. Karen and I met on, I don't know what date it was now, but we met with the candidates and.
Monday night, five PM.
Monday night, yes, sorry. Um, and it went well and we had uh two candidates applying for one position. And we had Dr. Lopez uh who agreed to become um the chair. Uh, that's not up to us, but you know, he will take that position on, uh so that solves that problem. And then we interviewed one candidate uh for the ZBA. And unfortunately, there's even more openings on the ZBA. And then, then the one that's open and the person that we interviewed, uh who's an attorney uh was willing to be a full member. So that will satisfy the full membership. But we'll still have two associates for the ZBA. So this is a commercial for the ZBA that we need more applicants and more volunteers. And um that was it. And Karen and I kind of came to a consensus on the Board of Health that maybe Karen can share. And there was only one applicant for the ZBA. And she was comfortable with being a full member and can attend the meetings and is ready to move forward.
Karen?
Yep, um, yes, um, Dr. Lo, Dr. Richard Lopez. Um, he's getting along well with the board. They're all working together nicely and he is willing to step up to be a full member. So we thanked him and told him we would recommend that his wish be granted. Um, and then the two other members, they're both incredibly, incredibly qualified. So we're just struggling with um how to, how to recommend one and still say thank you, please, to the other candidate. We don't need you at this moment, but we could very much, we could need you in thirty days or sixty days or four months and not both equally qualified. It's So um actually Caitlin, do you have her, it's, uh, what is Jerry's last name? I think Carlo and I decided um that we would put forward um. Jerry, what's her last?
Kramer.
Thank you. And she seems, in my opinion, and Carlo can um disagree. Uh, she seems um to have a little more flexibility in her career. The other candidate, uh Brian Healy, incredibly well qualified. You know, either would be, serve ably and very well. Um, so I would love to have him not give up on us and be available. But I, I think at this point, Jerry um would be a great candidate for the Board of Health.
Okay, so your recommendations are uh Dr. Richard Lopez for the full member and uh Jerry Kramer is the associate.
Kramer, thank you, yes.
Great. Uh, board members, any questions of the VASK or discussion?
Um, was there any conversation with Brian about, and he may already be doing this, I can't quite recall, about um sort of advising the Board of Health or being on calls for, you know, a- assistance with? Now, there wasn't any conversation about that.
I didn't ask him. I knew that several of the candidates that we had interviewed were on call and available.
Remember if he, if he is engaged in some, in some capacity already. Because I, I'd remembered that Eleanor had reached out to all of the past applicants. He may have been one of them. I, I'm not recalling. But thank you. I appreciate your recommendations and, and your.
Well, Jerry had definitely mentioned, she spoke up and said, I, I have attended a few of the meetings recently. Um, Brian didn't happen to mention that, so I don't know. I mean, we're all, he's pretty busy.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Great. I'm comfortable with the, with the recommendations.
I, I have a question, actually, for the VAS. Um, so I noticed um as I reviewed their resumes that Brian hold on, they're a little out of order, uh that Brian Healy um is a biostatician? Statistician? Biostatistician? Um, that seems like a particularly valuable skill set to have, that I don't think, correct me if I'm wrong. Um, is currently represented amongst our Board of Health members. Um, I mean, I, you know, we have two incredibly well-qualified applicants, which I think is a wonderful problem to have. Um, it's just given what we're dealing with right now with COVID um and the, how statistics play a key role in, in how we implement policy. Uh, I'm curious if you discussed that aspect of his experience and how it could contribute to the town.
I did not. I think either of these candidates.
We interviewed Jerry and Brian twice. Um, this is our second time. And exactly what you said, both qualified. And it just seems at this time that Brian has a much busier life. It's kind of, you know, Karen and I talked after the meeting.
I think the, the occasional command meeting even, he was a little concerned about that. Not to say that that won't, that couldn't change or we couldn't convince him and we won't need him, but yeah.
Yeah, that was, that was. Yeah, that was, that was our, kind of our, not a main decision, the way to decide, but he just, three kids, busy job, busy life, coaching soccer. And just, you know, and we think, we think he could do it and he said he could do it. But there was some reservation in, in his voice. And that, and that's really what did it for me, you know? More than qualified. I wanted to pick them last time.
I, I mean, I think this to me speaks of a broader issue of how we use staff within the health department. Because if, if the demand for these volunteers is so high that we're churning through four within a couple of months. I mean, that's, that's a serious problem. At a certain point, we're going to run out of qualified candidates. And, and that's just a really bad boom rate. So I'm, I'm sort of disappointed to see that someone with expertise in biostatistics, you know, is sort of being disqualified because the demands of the role are too high. So I mean, my preference would be Brian with a shift in responsibilities to the staff for command meeting. Which is, it's odd to me because I, I don't think. I don't think there are any other. Correct me if I'm wrong, Bob, but I don't think there's any other volunteers that participate in that, you know, and, and you know, the select board was thrown in, you know, quite late into that process, whereas the Board of Health has been there since the beginning. For the very reason that the staff has been representing the board for, for many months. So that would be my inclination. I think the statistics passed around is more valuable at this point.
Carrie and I are having a ongoing discussion. As you can appreciate, you know, the various chairs have slightly different views, although much in common for sure. And, and the concern is they've now gone down to a twice a month meeting schedule, which is relaxing compared to what they were doing. But their, their biggest concern, and this is really not who's doing what work, but just if the pandemic does come back in the winter and they have to go back to a one or two meetings a week schedule to make sure they have that flexibility. And that would be a burden on any of them. You know, and I have no opinion on the candidates. I'm just reflecting the conversation I've had with Carrie. I would say that the workload on the chair is, is a fair topic for what you're discussing, but not necessarily for how often the board meets.
Well, I mean, the, that, you know, other towns are not operating with this model. And so we're, you know, it's possible that we appoint Jerry and we burn through them as well.
I, I really have.
I'm not, Bob, I'm not sure if you were able to hear what I was saying. That if, if we are burning through volunteers at this rate, it's possible that you appoint Jerry now and then we have to go to the next one on the line to Brian. So i- in my view, it's not about how many command meetings they have to attend or whether the chair has more responsibilities. That's to do with the fact that other towns aren't, aren't making these demands of their boards of health.
Yeah, I think that we're in agreement that there needs to be a restructuring in the Board of Health. And either it follows along kind of what Eleanor sent to us with hiring a director. And/or it starts with what Carrie is recommending in terms of a study that gets done. But those, although very related to what we're talking about, they don't really relate, I think, to the candidate that we're going to bring into the role right now. Interestingly, I don't know either candidate, but I just looked in the background of Jerry. She's an RN with a PhD in population health. So I, I, I think we're in one of those situations where we have exceptional candidates. And it's hard to decide who would be best. But I think that the, the VASC did their, their job. And, you know, one of the things is just to make sure there's some flexibility that's possible, or excuse me, it's preferred that that flexibility is there. And it sounds, I, I don't think we can make a bad choice here. And my inclination is to follow the recommendation of the VASC.
I'm fine with that, with the understanding that as a future agenda item, we will take this up because I don't want to turn through another batch of Board of Health members.
Yeah. And, and I think that the topic may be Health Department, perhaps, more so than, than Board of Health.
Yeah.
I agree, very much related, and it's not okay to churn through, through members. And COVID could do who knows what. So we need to have a, a structure that supports people. And hopefully that means less burnout that comes from it.
Agreed.
So.
Fine with the recommendation put forward with the VASC.
Cool. So let's do the, the Board of Health first. I don't have a motion written out, Carlo, but can you just kind of improvise one?
Mark, did you get the email, the motions I sent you earlier?
Oh, sorry. I kind of, when I went off email, it didn't come back. So I truly, I just get into the.
That's okay.
I, I can find them and post them if that's helpful.
If you got it quicker, I'm going to just open my email now, but if you've already got it, that's even.
Yeah, I have it.
Oh, I don't actually think I see it there, but okay.
So if you can see the screen, I'll make it a little bigger. We're down to the VASC section.
I got it. I got it. You guys ready?
Ready.
Ready.
Move to appoint Richard Lopez to a full member on the Board of Health with the term expiring June 30th, 2022.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, Karen. Any discussion? Let's take a vote. Anne?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Carlo?
Yes.
Vanessa?
Yeah.
And Mark, yes. Thank you. Next motion?
Move to appoint Jerry Kramer to an associate position on the Board of Health with the term expiring June 30th, 2021.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Karen. Discussion? Not appearing. Let's take a vote. Anne?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Carlo?
Yes.
Vanessa? Sorry, you're muted. You're still muted. There you go. You're open now.
Yeah.
Thank you. And Mark, yes. Visor. And then you mentioned there's one candidate for ZBA and you folks are recommending that candidate?
Yes.
Yep. Move to appoint Cynthia Hartman to a full position on the zoning board of appeals with a term expiring June 30th, 2023.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, Karen.
A question?
Please, go ahead, Vanessa.
Um, so it looks like this individual is an attorney with, with a practice, but a focus on real estate, commercial and residential. My only question is, were conflict of interest discussed with this candidate?
They, they were.
This is something. And what was the result of that conversation?
There was no conflict of interest and if it was going to be one in a particular meeting, she would recuse herself.
It might be, this is just a sensitive topic and, and I know it's come up before. You know, given her professional role, I think it might be valuable to have a conversation with legal counsel. Not just for her, but for anyone who may be new to the board, so that they understand when it is necessary for them to recuse themselves. Because it's, it's not always straightforward.
Don't, don't, you just need to read the conflict of interest. As a, as a, as a member of a board committee, you need to read the rules on conflicts of interest. Her experience as a real estate attorney has actually been quite valuable because she doesn't work in reading, however, but she has dealt with easements, variances, all of the things that the ZBA is going to be making decisions of. So it's, it's definitely an asset, but you know, in general, I don't think we need to talk to legal counsel. I think you just need to understand.
Oh, sorry, no, I'm sorry. You're absolutely right. Let me clarify. I, I think her, her qualifications are, are great. My question is, or my suggestion is that, that legal counsel, as, as she's a new member, advise her on when she's required to recuse herself or disclose anything that could be perceived as a conflict of interest. As a, as an onboarding practice for, for something like ZBA.
And maybe just. Rather than taking town council's time, you know, letting new members know that they, they should do the ethics training, ethics commission training.
I, I think that'd be great. Yeah.
I do think that is, that is a strong open meeting law. Yep, ethics training, I think. I don't know if we have anything in place to let brand new, yes, board or committee members know that this is, you need to read this. This is your onboarding training. Okay, that's a great suggestion.
I think, I think Clark provides at least some of that to new, to new members as they get sworn in.
At some point, we, you know, onboarding is, is something that we have talked about and haven't taken further action on in terms of onboarding for particular roles in, in general, but, but here being at least even a little bit more specific to conflict of interest. So that may be something we want to put onto our discussion plate, kind of further down the road. Any other discussion? So we had a motion. I believe we had a second. Karen, did you second it?
I second that motion.
Great. Okay, so let's take a vote on, sorry, I just looked at your qualifications on Cynthia Hartman. So Anne?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Carlo?
Yes.
Mark? Ask Mark. Caitlin outside? Excuse me. Late for me even. I'm sorry, Vanessa, I couldn't hear. I was laughing too hard.
I was waiting to make sure you were talking to me and not yourself. Uh, yes.
So that Vanessa about you asking this, Mark votes yes. Okay. We need to do the warrant. And then we need to have a quick discussion. So let's do, let's look at the warrant. There's an updated version that Bob sent out this afternoon.
And Mark, I have an amendment that I emailed to you all and Bob has a copy. I was hoping he could help put it up on the screen.
Can you identify where it is, Karen?
I emailed it to us all. Bob has a copy of it.
Oh, sorry. What article?
Sorry, Article 12, the purpose.
Yeah, does the board want to walk through them sequentially or is just a couple of questions and be done with it?
Except for these two changes, I'm comfortable with the, the warrant article. Is it, I mean, sorry, the full warrant as it is.
Okay, just disclosure, the, the version I sent to the board just before the meeting basically allows changes from the moderator's request to hold a virtual town meeting. And, you know, Mark remembers this, I don't, that we did ask the other town meeting in June whether they would do this or not. And in this case, it has to be in the warrant because previously it was just the warrant was already closed. So that's, that's the bulk of the changes you see on the screen. Karen, I can put yours up if you want.
Yep, sure. If we're done with this one. Yep.
So confirming we are having a virtual town meeting. I'd seen the, the command notes made it sound like it was up in the air, but that's now outdated and we are having a virtual town meeting.
The moderator has requested it. It's up to the body to do it, but we're going to plan for it and, and I guess hope for it.
Right.
So the body, meaning town meeting or?
Right.
Our meeting has to vote the first night.
Yeah. So this was the first item that we had for discussion at the last town meeting. So the town meeting opened and then the town moderator put up a vote on this topic, just to confirm that the body was willing to have it as virtual. And once that passed, they were able to proceed. So I believe this is exactly the same thing. That's just the requirement to get things started. What Command has been doing is making sure that, first of all, any technology or other issues related to the virtual town meeting are, are accounted for and, you know, learn from anything that didn't work. Second is there may be people that decide to attend in person. There could be more, there could be less, there could be the same number, but that needs to be accommodated. So that has to be discussed. And then the, I guess the third option would be if for some reason the, the town meeting body decided that they would not have a virtual town meeting. Then arrangements have to be made for a, a physical town meeting in November. So.
I think people like the ability to have snacks, so.
I think snacks, I think bathroom was a plus. And I think the other thing from my perspective is the number of attendees, I believe, was a record.
It was a record.
Uh, the participation was, was extensive. So I, I think that's all to the good. So does anybody have any comments other than the changes that we're seeing on Bob's screen? So change number one is, is the, the verbiage for the virtual town meeting. Sorry, the change here was, okay, accommodated, right?
Just to correct that the town meeting was really June, not March.
Yeah, okay.
Which I really wasn't sure. And then there's a small thing here at the end.
Necessary or incidental to the acquisition?
And, and we haven't really talked about this. I can, if you wish, but it's, it's just a very generous donation. And its ultimate destination is Conscom. And as of yesterday, Conservation is still working on what the right process is, whether it should go through town meeting or not. But it's very important to keep this in as a placeholder. If it's not needed, it can be tabled, not a problem. But the ultimate destination for this parcel is con- conservation.
Got it. So this is the donation of, sorry, about 13 acres of property.
It's, it's just to the south, southeast of the parcel the town meeting reviewed a year or two ago in Timmerneck Swamp.
Timmerneck Swamp. Great. So this, the, this article would be to allow the town to.
Accept it as a gift.
Yeah, not acquire, accept. Okay. And there may be some incidental costs. So that's the change being requested here.
Yep.
Okay, great. And then, sorry, Karen.
Let me find, um, let me find Karen's.
And I'm afraid I'm going to kick everyone off the meeting if I try to do it myself because I've never done it.
I have, I can, I've got it. I can share.
Do that for some reason. I don't see it. Oh, there it is. Well, if you got it, yeah, there you go.
So Karen, you want to walk us through this place?
Yes, there are two pages here. The second page was the original warrant article and it's a, a global remove and replace. So I expressed a concern two weeks ago about the way the stretch code article was written, not about the legal aspect. I'm not an attorney. But the purpose put some limitations, referenced green communities and put some limitations over the implementation of it. And I expressed my own layman's concerns. And then I followed up by speaking with Department of Energy. And I forget what the D O E R, Neil Duffy, who also is heavily involved in green communities. And I also went out and looked at a number of other towns. So other bylaws in other towns are very, very straightforward. You just dropped the stretch energy code. So you don't put anything in there like this. This, this is putting some kind of weird limitations. It mentions a program that might go away at some point. So in speaking with Neil Duffy, he said that we should, I'm going to quote him, "We should not be putting any stipulations in our bylaw." The stretch code itself defines how it will be applied. Reading cannot actually make any further modifications. You know, building size, anything like that. It is not allowed by law. So the cleanest way to do this is to just adopt the stretch code as is. In fact, looking down below at 7103, it explains what the stretch code is, what it'll do. We honestly, in my opinion, we don't need a purpose, but every town seems to have their own format for bylaws. So not having gotten any feedback from staff, I'm kind of just assuming they just want to stick to a consistent format. So the new sentence in there specifically says, we are just going to adopt the any stretch code by law. And it's consistent with, sounds like almost exactly the same as Andover, Brookline, a number of other communities. So there's nothing, there's nothing legal in there. This is, this is an English language description, but what it does not do is it does not attempt to add any further stipulation to the scratch code. We can't do that.
And this is the essentially what the. And this is the essentially what the two hundred eighty some odd other communities have have done also.
Three, they, every law is interesting, the ones that you can find online actually are by are bylaws are very easy to find. Other communities aren't, but when you can find them, um um they're consistent. Um or I should say they're not consistent, they have all all different formats, but. You don't get into like the philosophical purpose of the town and you just definitely can't attempt to put any parameters about how it will be applied. The um. Building inspector, the building department, he is the enforcement authority, this is an extension of the building code. That probably makes sense to Bob if I'm not saying it correctly. And um, yeah.
Okay, um I'm fine with this change.
Mark, I feel like I may need to make a comment, um everything Karen says may be absolutely true. Uh but I didn't see this till seven o'clock tonight and Town Council has never seen it. Um I did ask Town Council uh specifically Karen's question and just never heard back, I reminded them again uh yesterday morning. I assume that this change is innocuous. Um I assume that if there's some reason why Town Council used other language and it's necessary. And I don't know that it is, I'm not saying that it is, I'm just saying this is not usually how we do bylaws. And I'm not a lawyer, so I can't represent what the impact of a change like this is. It looks simple to me, it looks innocuous, but just so I've said that I don't know, I again, I can't swear to that.
Why, Karen, I actually thought you said you shouldn't put a purpose in there, but then there's a. The red is you, this red is your language, right?
So the format that our staff has put together for bylaws includes a purpose.
I see.
So I was just not looking to mess with this and and edit it anymore than we needed to. So Bob, I'm I'm surprised to hear you say that, um so Neil Duffy also said that someone from Reading Town Council did reach out to him. And he told her the same thing, we just cannot, he said you should just adopt the stretch code. Your purpose should be, we're just gonna adopt the stretch code, that's all it is.
That's great, I just haven't heard from Town Council and I just needed to tell you that.
Yeah, and also that's not, but that's not what this purpose here says.
Um yeah, if you want, um I can, I have a couple other cut and paste that I did just to show you what other towns are doing.
I mean, I'm just, if D O E R said, don't. In include a purpose other than the purpose is to adopt the stretch energy code. Then maybe that's what it should.
Yeah, let me say, Mark, can I email you one more document that you could just put up?
Yeah, I was actually, I have Brooklines, I'm just scrolling through it as fast as I can.
Belmont, Andover, Chelmsford, Brookline, they're all pretty much the same.
Okay.
Give me one second, I'm.
You and all, Bob, now if you want. So what, so Anne, what I found in looking at other bylaw formats is you, what I was saying is. It's not consistent that they do it in a similar format that we do. That they they might not have a purpose, and some of them put in there like adopted on the day, I mean, just, I guess there's some flexibility you can. And how you can do.
The purpose language is is what you borrowed from other communities.
Yes, uh not looking to reinvent the wheel, two hundred and eighty-three other communities have already done this.
So this is Brookline.
Yeah.
So just let me, so here's their, this is their bylaw, stretch energy code. Purpose or by more energy efficient alternative.
Other stuff, only the purpose. And that's.
I'm in agreement with Anne here, where if the state recommendation is not to include a purpose. Then we should probably not include a purpose and keep it as simple as possible.
Um so he didn't tell me, just to be clear, I'm sorry, I wasn't clear, he didn't say we couldn't include a purpose, he said. You shouldn't be putting any stipulations in there, any parameters, you shouldn't be attempting to describe what you're going to do with a stretch code. You need to just adopt the stretch code, this is just an English language, that's all this is, is saying we're going to adopt it. As is, we're not gonna imply it, we're not gonna say, it only applies to green buildings, blue buildings, red buildings, um that's what the previous language was saying. So we can't do that.
Can we go back to the proposed changes?
Oh, sorry. Hang on, let me fumble in the background without sharing my screen just for a second. Okay, here it is. Is that the version you're looking for?
We could close the warrant with this language, but Town Council could provide us for town meeting. You know, if there needs to be a a comma or or rewrite, we could. There could be an amendment on town meeting floor.
Yeah, I I I think that fairly regularly we have Town Council providing updates, um and then having the body accept them. I think the concern. Yeah, I think if we're overly restrictive, um then that gets harder to to make the changes, whereas we're we're a bit more generic to start it, if if anything, it's broader. But it's not actually broader, it's actually more more precise.
And the way this is written, it's we on- only Reading is, and maybe this is a new way and better way of doing it. Re- Reading is referencing seven eighty C M R appendix one fifteen double A. Everybody else is, not everybody else, other people are referencing just seven eighty C M R and yeah, I don't even know what that is, so I'm an attorney. So I don't want to mess with putting any of that in there, the purpose is not required by law, and that's not, it's just kind of a stylistic thing.
Anything um in writing from D O E R?
Um no, I have a voicemail with it, where him saying exactly the same thing if you want. It's just some, um not every um bylaw has a purpose, they, there's no.
I'm I'm fine with this for purposes of closing the warrant, I think it might be helpful to, you know, hear from Town Council.
Yes, and I did request that several times and um but not changing this, we would have been. Approving a warrant article that was incorrectly written and I wasn't gonna let you guys do that. Even if this isn't perfect. At least we're not, we're not doing something wrong, which is what the previous language was doing.
Bob, can you put up the motion? Sorry, I don't seem to have that email with motions on it tonight.
Um I will, I just added Karen's language to the document I'm using for the warrant. So this, this is a replacement. Um I'll, you know, we'll use what she said in case I got it wrong, but I think I, I think I got it right.
Great, and there are no changes further in the document, correct?
Correct.
Okay, great, so let's take a look at a motion.
Uh is that okay to read?
Yes.
Yep.
Here you go.
Okay. Move to close the warrant consisting of thirteen articles for November town meeting to be held on November ninth, twenty twenty.
For a second.
Second.
Thanks Karen, any further discussion? No, let's take a vote, uh Anne?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Carlo?
Yes.
Vanessa? And Mark, yes. Great, so we closed the warrant. Folks, I'm gonna suggest that we not work on town manager goals tonight, if that's acceptable. Bob, to you as well as to to all the members, just because it's eleven twenty-three, and I don't think we're gonna do justice to anything. I.
It's perfectly acceptable to me and we can proceed any way you want, but if board members want to send individual written comments, I'm certainly receptive. That might help move along when the discussion happens, I don't know.
Yeah, that's great, just just, you know, my my quick comment, I thought you did a very good job incorporating a lot of what we discussed. And certainly uh the spirit, I saw it, I saw it all there, I have a couple of quick comments that I'm happy to send over. I don't know how others feel, but that was that was my quick take on things.
Mark, I think it it merits public discussion, I mean, I consider my notes over, but um I I think it merits public discussion.
So I was.
For our benefit and the public.
Yeah, no, I completely agree, we need to go through it and we need to discuss it and vote on it both in public session, so uh no issues with that. My suggestion is the following, I think we should talk about the October twentieth agenda logistics, um which is related to the Auburn Street Tower. And then take a quick look at future items specifically for the sixth of October meeting and and I think we as a placeholder of the thirteenth. Um and then we um I would defer everything else until October sixth, if that's acceptable to folks. Is that all right? Yeah, great, okay, October twentieth, agenda logistics. A number of us have been in touch individually with um many of the residents and abutters to the Auburn Street Tower. Um I reached out um as of yesterday, might have been this morning, I think it was yesterday, that's before midnight. To to see what their thoughts were in terms of how to present uh conceivably at the October twentieth meeting. And I'm gonna quickly, if I can, I'm just gonna grab comments, um so I get them exactly right, but the essence of it was. They have yet to meet as a community to discuss how they'd like to approach it. But a few folks have talked to a few other folks and they seem, um okay, I found it here. What they're gonna recommend to the neighborhood on the upcoming call is that neighborhood representatives, two or three reps, they would ask that they be allowed. Thirty minutes for an initial presentation, additional citizens who wish to speak could get three minutes. Um and neighborhood representatives will get a chance to respond to to statements. So that would be their, that was their request in terms of format. What I was thinking is that um we have some comments that we've all heard and certainly there are letters that have come in. Maybe each member would, in addition to that, want to create a list of questions they would like answered, either from neighborhood input or for their own, their own questions. Compile that information, send it off to Bob and then ask that staff review that, turn it into, I'll call it a Q and A. Um so that they're able to answer a number of the questions or explore some of the questions that range from, you know, why does this have to be here? What are the options, how does this work, things like that? And to make sure that that would, in the worst case, be in our packet in advance of the six twenty meeting, or perhaps even sooner, if it turns out that that's possible. That would allow everyone to read through it, just to kind of see what some of the discussion already has been and then make our meeting on the twentieth more productive. Instead of kind of starting at square one again. Does that seem like a reasonable approach to folks? Right, yeah, I think that's very important to set a deadline. In in ASAP, and then let's pick a date, but it's gotta be ASAP, you know, if we said the end of this week, would that work for everybody?
For questions on the cell tower?
Yes.
I I I'd actually like a little bit more time if I could, like to next week, next week.
Like Monday?
How about the weekend, we can have the weekend to do it, I think that would be nice.
To have.
Okay, so to have them to Bob before, you know, Monday morning first thing, so send it out Sunday night? Great, and then those would be the questions that we use structurally, sorry, Carl.
I've been wanting to put some time to look at old videos and packets and I haven't, you know, I think if I could have the weekend to do that, that would be helpful.
That'd be great, and I think what we really want to make sure of is that town staff has a chance to look at them and, you know, hopefully they have answers to many of them and others, they'll they'll do some research on. I think that makes the meeting much more productive, sorry, Carl.
Thanks, just a quick question, is the twentieth? Resident feedback only, are we getting a an update and a presentation on a proposed? Cell tower, not a cell tower, what's an update for the water tower? There's that, is this, is that night really resident feedback, resident resident comments only?
What what are your thoughts?
Myself?
Yes.
Oh, I would love an update on the the meeting that we had in June on, you know, because the water tower's already been funded. By us, uh by town meeting to. Are we gonna break ground in, you know, next spring? Um and then obviously there's a bigger discussion of the cell tower or not a cell tower and where to put the equipment and the temporary space for the equipment. Which doesn't seem to be too difficult, but um there's a lot going on, although there will be a lot going on in that site. And I I know we've all met with some residents and read a lot of emails and spoken to people on the phone, all five of us have, if I'm sure Bob and staff have as well. So I personally would love an update on when are we moving forward with at least the water tower portion, because that has to get done.
Right.
And some kind of timeline and then address everything else, but the water tower, I know we can't keep on pushing that. Too far unless we can, I I I didn't think we could.
Yeah, I think that sounds right, one second, I think that sounds right, and uh perhaps what the what staff could do is, um and this will be embodied in the questions. Discuss some options that might be available as it relates to cell tower. You know, the cell tower, no cell tower, what could happen, what can carriers do versus what do we have to do, are there any legal obligations related to that? Just so that there can be a discussion about options can start to take place, again, I I didn't anticipate we'd resolve things on the twentieth. But we'd have a lot of information, we'd hear some options and we could decide kind of where to go next from there, that was my thought, sorry, Vanessa.
Um thanks, Mark, so I I have a couple of suggestions on on how we can move this forward on the twentieth. For before I jump to that though, Bob, I had emailed you last week, I'd asked if you could send me a copy of. The R F P that was sent out as well as, um apparently there was some security study that was conducted. That might be helpful for the rest of the board um as well, if you could be so kind as to send that to us this week. Um and then for the security study, if there is um any information that's potentially problematic. If it were to be disclosed to the public, can you let us know so we make sure not to keep that confidential, if there's not and it speaks in generalities and the public can see it, great. Um but I want to be sensitive to any, to releasing any security information. Um so that's one, two, um I suggested from a homework perspective, I know um we have had. Various presentations on this over the course of the last, say, two to three years. If, and I'll be honest, I I don't remember the exact dates, I know one was um July and I want to say one was June of each of the previous two years. If if Bob or someone on staff can send us the exact dates of when we discuss those topics, and then if everyone from the board. Could review those sections again, so that we're not asking similar questions um that have already been answered in meetings. I I don't think the discussions are that long, but I think they're half an hour each. Um and then for night of on the twentieth, um I recommend that uh if the board agrees. That we ask the staff to put together a presentation of no more than two or three slides with the options that have been presented to date. Um so that the focus of the meeting on the twentieth is not a giant rehash of everything, because the information is already public. Um but simply this to highlight what the options before the board are, separate cell tower, quick list of pros and cons. Um combined with the water tower, quick list of pros and cons, I mean, I'm talking like top five, three to five bullets max. So that it's very clear what is being asked of the board and what the community can expect. Carlo, you mentioned timeline, I fully agree um for when that's needed, and then we would have public comment and then the board discussion. And I think it, you know, from the from the perspective of the residents that I've talked to, that they've made it very clear that they do not want a cell tower. That they want us to vote against a separate cell tower, so setting expectations upfront for what we're voting on, or not voting on. Um I I think would be wise, I think one way or another, at the end of the twentieth, we should have a vote on something, whether it's to instruct the staff to do something more. Or to vote against something or for something else, but I, you know. So I think we ran into problems by not voting last time.
So the the only way I can see that working is not just by looking at what's already been discussed. It also has to include options that may be newly generated. That either weren't thought of before or weren't presented before, or frankly, were discarded before. Because I'm not comfortable that we have enough options on the plate currently, I'm not ready to to vote on it, it's a. Here it is, it's A or B, we're not there, I'm not ready to make that vote, I'm not comfortable with that.
I would agree.
So I I we need to see some other options. And without that. And I'm just, I'm uncomfortable saying that. I'm, I'm just, I'm uncomfortable saying that we will take a final vote on the 20th. I don't know that we're in a position to do that.
So my, how about this, if, it's funny that we're on different, different sides of voting on or not voting on issues tonight, Mark. So I, I see your point, how about this? If there is no new, if there are no new proposals and we're only dealing with proposals that were put forth previously, at that point, it might be worthwhile, I, I'm trying not to drag this out. If, if there's no new information, I don't see why we can't vote.
I, my, my feeling is that if there's no new information, I would deem that an unacceptable result. And, and that we, we really missed something here. There have to be other options. One option being leaving the equipment on the new tower, à la Peabody if I understand correctly. Another could be saying to the carriers, you're going to be down for, for six months, decide what you want to do about it. I have no idea what the legal ramifications, if any, are from that.
See if they care.
I don't know, I don't have enough information to answer that.
Yep.
And I don't know if it was, if it's been approached yet or not. And it may be that it has and will have information and that's very helpful, it may also be that it hasn't been approached that way.
I think the F A Qs provided in advance of the meeting will be helpful, not just for the residents, but to us as well, because we probably all have the same questions of have there been any developments since this was last presented, are there new options?
Right, and I have a feeling that the, the discussions that are going on now may be generating the need for new ideas. Hoping that that's the case.
Let me make a general comment, when we do presentations and put them in your packet, those are just the slides, they're, that's not the conversation. So when you look at a packet presentation, you don't hear the music, as it were. I'm concerned that if we try to short circuit a presentation and I truly appreciate what Vanessa is trying to do, but I think the board needs the full story in as crisp a way as possible, I guess I'll say. And, and I, you know, we can work towards, the F A Qs is certainly a good idea, we can work towards that. But, you know, there's been examples where the board has cut off discussion and missed some points that would have been, would have come out. Whether that makes any difference or not, none of us can say. But on this issue, I think you need to hear the full story. So that there's no stone unturned in terms of, you know, now we have to go back and have another discussion because we didn't know about this. Now, give us some time, let us lay it out there as much as possible in advance so you can read it. But, you know, I'll have to talk to staff as to how that, how that works. I believe we want to have consultant attend, which would just, you know, much like the parking consultant tonight, is for your benefit to ask professional questions that we can't always answer.
Great, thanks Vanessa.
Sorry about that moment interrupt. So Mark, I mean, this is, this is a three hour discussion, if, if the town, if the staff has put forward a one hour presentation and the residents are going to want to talk for about an hour, right? Especially if we allow them time to give their presentation, which I think is a, it is a worthwhile endeavor. And then the board needs to have a conversation, that's at least, that, that's three hours in a meeting that has a couple of other things plus the things we put off tonight. So I, I just want to be practical about
So hang on, you're missing the meeting on the 6th. There is a meeting on the 6th, right, before the 20th. So there's one more meeting, now, your point is still quite valid, because what we have on the 6th, plus what we aren't covering tonight, and, and, and if we do parking on the 13th, it's still too much to, to accomplish in October. So
You really need to do tax classification.
Right, so that tax classification is, is set for the 20th also. So the two big things on the 20th are water tanks, cell carriers and tax classification. And then that assumes, Bob, do you think that town manager review you'll be ready for the 6th, you'll have had a chance to review things by then?
Yeah, it would be nice if we could add the goals discussion to that night.
Mark, we need another meeting.
Yeah, we do, so we, I think we need to count on the 13th. And it may be, Carla, what did you say about Halloween?
I'm free.
Yeah, so I think we, we need to plan on the 13th. And if we are going to make that parking only, assuming that things can happen in that timeframe, if we are, well, first of all, do we need it to be parking only? Do we think we can accomplish in a couple of hours, it's a public hearing as well? No.
Given what happened, I, I'm not too confident.
Okay, so let's make that the sole purpose of the 13th.
Again, I, I want to meet with staff tomorrow to see if we can do that, so I don't want to assume that yet.
Right.
Okay, well, so even if we can't do that, I think we've got plenty of stuff to add to the 13th, to have its own meeting. So let's count on the 13th as a meeting. And then the question is, do we also need the 27th?
Well, let me just ask a question. I assume that you do not want to change the cell carrier discussion from the 20th. And I know our assessors don't want to change tax classification from the 20th. So what other issues need to be added into the 13th and maybe Mark, you want to talk to me offline, that's fine.
Yeah, so I think one of the things we need to talk about is the water sewer rates that we, we have plugged in on the 6th, so maybe we have to decide if that stays on the 6th or not. But it's either the 6th or the 13th, we've had enough questions from residents that I think it's an important discussion to have. Yeah, and then so if we have both review and goals and tax specification.
Mark, do you want to work through that offline with town manager?
Absolutely, let's count on the
Either that or we'll shoot for midnight.
No, no, you, you were not far off, Bob. So we'll take that offline, count on the 13th please, as a meeting date and we'll, we'll see what we can fit into these times and see if we might need an additional meeting beyond that, which I think is, is quite possible here.
And, and Mark, we can chat about this offline, but I just want to ask you in front of the board, what Zoom format do you lean to, is it the town meeting style or is it the tonight style? And, and consider that you also have a tax classification hearing that night with an unknown amount of interest. So I, I just want to say that out loud, I, I welcome all your feedback and, and Mark and I can work on that.
Yeah, and if, if people don't have an objection to either webinar format like town meeting or what we're doing tonight, where we're kind of inviting people in one by one, if no one has a, oh, you can't do X or you can't do Y, then, then Bob and I can discuss and work it through. Unless someone has a very strong opinion, boy, I really want that webinar format.
No opinion.
The, my, my, my concern about town meeting was that all we could see was the presenter, we couldn't see each other. That wasn't very conducive.
Right, there's a way we can let people, let me, let me take that point, if it's okay with, with folks. I'll work it through with Bob in terms of a structure that makes sense that allows, I think it's important for people to be able to see each other. So let's make sure that we're able to accommodate that. And then tonight, just a quick FYI, because it was a public hearing, the best practice, even in the Zoom world, is to allow people to not only register in advance for a public hearing, but also during the course of the hearing to be allowed to speak. You know, if, if, if they say, hey, I'd like to speak, which is why we did that a little bit differently. That's different from regular public, scheduled public comment, scheduled public comment as we're doing it is, is kosher. For public hearing, the best practice is to make sure that there's this broader opportunity to get input, even if it's not provided upfront.
Thank you, Mark.
All right, so
Can we adjourn?
What's that?
Can we adjourn?
No, we hang up 17 more minutes, I think that's a
Mark, I'll stay with you.
Are you ready to make a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks Karen, now let's take a vote, Anne?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Carlo?
Yes.
Vanessa? Mark, yes. Good night folks, thank you very much.
Thank you Caitlin, good night, thanks Bob.